Also rescued from Sweet Paw.
Oh, yeah.
Cindy Sweetheart, yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, nice. So how old is your baby?
He's four months.
Oh, boy.
Body training today.
He's doing really good. He's doing really good.
Well, as they sleep for the night.
They do. He is. I mean, he's getting up at like four and he goes in, he's in a crate. So he goes in at like eight, eight thirty and it's there until four.
Nice.
Yeah.
And how's yours doing?
I know.
Up and training like that? Not like that.
Oh.
Nice. He's decided that the most fun thing in the whole room is to jump up, grab part of my jacket and fall back down with his sharp teeth.
Oh, yeah.
So if I start looking as if I'm living on the street.
How sharp are the teeth?
Also?
That's, that's.
Okay, thank you. We had a little.
Oh, really?
Yeah, okay, so.
It's them meeting at the same time, isn't it?
Yeah. And I'll let Greg, he's an honor. Debbie, did Greg go down to get his computer?
I don't know. No.
No. I've got a tracker you could put on.
There he is.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I'll be changed eventually, I suppose. Right. All right. So Greg, you can do all the hands up, hands down. Take care of that.
Yes, soon as I get logged in.
No, no, no. All hands down. Mr. D.
You can be here until tomorrow.
Nope. He runs a very efficient.
Yeah.
So you just keep on showing order to it?
Yes, always.
So productivity improvement.
I could spoil getting out of here.
Yeah, not. Okay, it is six thirty and I would like to call the Manchester Select Board Meeting of Monday after over third to order. Roll call vote of members present, John Round.
Here.
Brian Solacy.
Here.
Kathy Balata.
Yeah.
Ann Harrison.
Here.
And Becky Jakes. Okay, first, any public comments on non-agenda items? Any hands, Greg? Okay, none. Moving right along, we're going to go ahead and open the National Grid hearing for Pine Street Joint Sound Hall at the. Is it zero Pine Street? What is the exact location? Two oh one? No. It says two oh one on this map, but I'm not. It was confusing to me.
It's found by.
Yeah, but I mean in terms of the actual.
It's a feed to two oh one. It doesn't mean it's at two oh.
Right.
So I, we kind of know where it's at.
That's the nearest property.
Okay, all right. So why don't we go ahead and have our National Grid representative? Stephanie.
She represents National Grid forty-four rivers group, Beverly, Massachusetts.
Becky, you should just formally take a role to open the meeting.
Oh, good. My bad.
Since it's a public hearing.
Yes. Roll call vote to open the meeting. The public hearing. Thank you. For the National Grid Joint Sound Hall Petition. Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes.
Need a bear she be representing National Grid forty-four rivers group, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide a new deed into this property. We have it listed as two oh one Pine Street.
Which is our transfer station.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions from the board, starting with John Round?
Give me some timeframes on this.
The moving parts.
Understood. And that's here.
Well, if this passes and the easement is signed and sent forth, I don't know whether or not the town has yet signed that easement. Then it's about six weeks after that.
Okay. All right, so when is all that going to get signed? Is that like happening?
We can have you sign up tonight.
Oh, okay. So six weeks after that, then weather's not a factor of the time of.
Emergencies and weather is what it is.
Or seasonal, let's just say seasonal issue. This work going to affect any, any other, any other users or customers?
There's nothing else around there.
I know that.
Um, no, not that I can think of. It's just setting a hole at that location and then everything else is being done on the property.
Okay.
John, Brian?
No, I'm good.
Kathy, I just quick question. How long should those construction take? Is it one day, one week? What, what? That depends on how quickly they can get their on-the-ground facilities put in. There are a few moving parts internally for the compactors. They have to disconnect some services at that location and re-feed them. So it depends on the customer and how quickly they can move those services.
So that depends on Black Earth and how quickly they, okay. Anne?
No, no questions.
Um, I, I have. On the key for the map, um, there were a couple of items that I didn't, just a couple of poles. Would you mind coming up? I just want to ask you what these are. And these pertain to the poles here. So that symbol, which is a Y, isn't represented on the key. And I'm just, what, what?
Oh, that's a guy.
Okay, all right. And so it's, it's simply taking the proposed to move them seventy.
That's staying. That is going in. That is going in.
Yeah, that is remaining. Okay. So the existing stage.
Yes. This is just the blanket forms that we use.
That's why it was a little, okay, good. All right, um. Do we need to have Concom approval on this? Greg? You get a little proximity to wetland?
We've approved the project overall.
Concom has?
Yes. So we don't believe there are other issues.
We could not have done our design without that approval first being presented to us.
Okay, um, will there be any digging up of pavement?
Just where the location of the pole is.
And what about trees? And are any trees being taken out?
Only once the Black Earth has agreed with Concom on.
Are there any, um, is there anything on the property, Greg, that the board should actually, in terms of trees know about? Do you know? That's not necessarily Concom.
Right. Not that comes to mind, but we can certainly have Black Earth come and present the final plans to you.
I, I, yeah.
We were doing some tweaking, shrinking the footprint of the building down a little bit. So when that's all ready, it shouldn't be appropriate to have them come in and provide you just an update and an overview of the site plan.
Um, does the board feel that is prudent, necessary or not? John?
I, I, I don't think it's, this is a pretty distant location from where, where folks live.
Brian?
No.
Kathy?
I'm good with the winds.
Anne?
Having looked at the area fairly closely, there isn't anything very nice there. We're not going to lose a magnificent oak.
All right, sounds good. Then I don't think we need that. Any other questions for National Grid on this? May I have a motion then please to approve National Grid Plan Number?
I'm sorry, you should just ask for any other public comment.
Oh, thank you. Any other public comment?
Let's see.
Okay, not seeing any other public comment or any more comment from the board. May I please have a motion to approve National Grid Plan Number three zero three zero zero one one two Pine Street uh, and Verizon New England Inc. to install one J O pole on Pine Street, approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy-three feet northwest of center line of the intersection of the off-ramp to Route one twenty-eight and continuing approximately fifty feet in a northerly direction and to ensure that any disturbed pavement is returned to original, if not better, condition.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Thank you, thank you. So we can sign that later. Next up, we have interviews for.
For another five minutes.
Okay, let's go to consent agenda. Very. Does everybody have a chance to read the meetings, meeting minutes of September? Okay. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Double second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Balata. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solacy. Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Next up, we have two memorial bench approvals at Mascanamo. Any questions on those?
Move to approve, bench approval, bench requests as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Um. May I have a motion to accept the ADA Committee resignation vacancy by Joan Snow?
So. Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Balata. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Balata, yes. Brian Solacy.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake said yes. Um. Motion to approve the new location for Little Free Library at Singing Beach Bath House, providing there are no questions.
Good. This is the third location we've looked at, right? We're on number three? Is it? Okay, I just needed to be clear. It's been moving around.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Kathy Balata, seconded by Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solacy. Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Ann Harrison. Yes. Becky Jake says yes. Um.
Shall we try Wobbling Goblins?
Well, okay, let's go to Wobbling Goblins. Say it again.
Better do it.
Okay, any questions regarding the Wobbling Goblin?
Move to approve the Wobbling Goblin event.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy, uh, Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy. John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. A motion to approve the road closures for the Halloween on October thirty-first from five thirty to seven thirty. Is there any question on that?
Which roads?
So it's, um.
Norwood Avenue.
Usual Norwood.
By. Rock.
Rock.
By.
Allen. Well, here we go.
Todd sent a letter in.
Yeah.
And mentioned that the road closures were a half an hour before and a half an hour after.
The approach Norwood.
And just for that proposed amount of time?
Yes.
Okay, is that? Not Allen, not.
No, just.
Yeah.
It's Norwood over, over the school.
No, Norwood to school, okay.
And he has left. Yeah, Christine, the Toronto Barber known. Um, who has expressed concern in the past.
Yeah, so they're working up a flyer that will be distributed to, to the homes involved. People will be able to get to it from their homes during that time.
How are the roads going to be blocked off?
There'll be barricades and then offices at many of the intersections.
So like in the past, they'll have soft horses and.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, because they tried to discourage that last time and it was not successful. And that's, I believe, was the case, right? Isn't that what Todd said?
Right, that's how very covert we try to, sort of people say in their own neighborhoods. You know, the traditions die hard, right? So it's, it's, people like coming to the village area, the core of the village.
And it'll change again, I'm sure, as it does, as it's fine. Any other questions on that, concerns?
Move that we approve the police chief's request to block off the residential streets between Summer and Norwood.
School.
I'm sorry, in school, yes, school and already. Not including school.
So the road, may I make a friendly amendment?
You make it.
So roads as presented for the Times. Police Chief noted. So, except, thank you. Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Balata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy. John Round.
Yeah.
Becky Jake says yes. Okay, it is now six forty-five and we have the Harbor Advisory Committee interviews. First one before we start.
Yes.
Um, I've been married to Jim Starkey for forty-five years. Um, I, this is not a paid position, so there really is no serious issue, but for the sake of, oh. Perhaps, I will not ask questions or make comments, but I would like to listen to the interviews.
Thank you. So you will refuse yourself?
I'm not recusing myself. I am just not participating.
Okay. Okay, first up, we have Sean Zahn. Sean?
Screen, yeah.
Would you like to unmute yourself?
Sorry, computer was a little slow. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to appear here today.
Thank you, Sean. Why don't you go ahead and tell us? We do have what you submitted, but explain, if you would please, why it is you're interested in being on the Harbor Advisory Committee?
Well, um, I've been in this town since two thousand and five and been active on the harbor. I finally have a boat on the harbor back in, beginning of two thousand and nineteen. So now, for myself, I use the harbor pretty, pretty much almost daily during the season. So I'm, I'm very involved with the town. I try to, as I've stated on my thing, I've already served with uh, ZBA committee. And I, I'd just like to be more involved with this also since I, I benefit from it more than just from it being in the town, but from its use. So I want to do everything I can to make sure that we go in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board? John Round?
Yeah, Sean, thanks for volunteering. It sounds like it's a bit of a habit because you were involved with the CBA, I do recall. What do you think the harbor's biggest challenges?
Right now, well, there's, there's several really big challenges right now. We've got to look at, of course, the things with, that's going on with climate change. We've got to look at, um, the environmental impacts and the growing use of the harbor, the amount of people. Plus trying to keep it as a, you know, a functional for commercial as well as, you know, public use.
Okay. I'm good.
Anne?
No, the answer to those questions, I'm good.
Uh, one question. What specific skill set do you think you bring to the Harbor Advisory Committee?
Well, in my previous position, I worked with Delta Airlines for a number of years and, um, I was, I retired, I just, I retired from them a couple of years ago. I served as the Environmental and Safety Coordinator for the Northeast, which involved not only Boston, but it was Hartford and Portland and New York. In Boston, I particularly worked with all that state agencies and federal agencies dealing with specifically in Boston with the, use the harbor and how the airport affected the harbor. In that timeframe, I worked on, in, I was on the Massport Safety Environmental Committee, working with them when we were doing the extension of the runways out there. So I was very involved with all the impacts that that would have, the environmental, including all the safety of the boaters and everything else that was going on. very involved with all the impacts that that would have, the environmental, including all the safety of the boaters and everything else that was going on. I've had a lot of extensive background and training with all the impacts around water and waterways. And yeah, that's, I guess that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to ask questions, just listening? Okay. My question would be, when you say go in the right direction, what does that mean to you?
Um, keeping it as a functional functional pristine harbor. You know, that, that everyone in this town and, you know, neighborhoods can enjoy and, you know, keeping it very functional as far as keeping our, our commercial people able to do their jobs that they want to keep doing and just, and also, you know, doing everything we can to protect the harbor at the same time.
Protect how so?
I mean environmentally, I mean, we've got a lot of challenges coming up. I mean, we've, we've got to look at, of course, rising sea levels, how that's going to affect the harbor and all the structures around. We've got, you know, I mean, plus, you know, how, how does that affect? You know, dock space in here in the town? How does that, you know, moorings, everything, everything like that.
What do you find most problematic within the harbor? At this point?
I would say probably some of the volume that goes on in the harbor at times, volume of people. And then because some of it is, you know, trying to, we've got, you know, we've got such limited space too. I guess the other problems I would see is with you know, between dock space and moorage space. You know, how, how do we find balances with that? It's probably some of the biggest.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean. What we will do at this point is just go down the list of all the applicants. The, the volunteer applicants. Okay, thank you, Sean.
Your honor, thank you.
We have Steve Mayo.
He's on the podium.
If you would like.
Hi, hello, my name is Steve Mayo. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I grew up in Manchester, went to Manchester High. We moved in here in back in nineteen seventy-one, I think it was. My parents had moved back from Seattle. My mother was a resident here originally. And they started me on Manchester Sailing, so I've been a sailor all my life. My father built a boat. We've been sailing a stone horse for thirty years. To his dismay, I bought a powerboat three years ago, so I've had to switch over to the dark side, as he said. But I've been on this harbor for many years, even though I have not lived in Manchester the whole time. I moved back there in twenty sixteen. I spent all my summers here and I consider myself a boater, a recreation boater. I've been here for a long time. I know the harbor, I know the waters and I've enjoyed it. And we have a wonderful resource here, both the town and for the public. And I think it's important that, you know, we continue to maintain this and keep it safe, protect the environment, but also try to find ways to open up to more people. And to support the commercial fishermen and the businesses in town as well. I think it'll also be a good revenue source.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, I'd ask you the same question. What's the, what's the biggest problem that we're facing over the next, well, let's put a timeframe on, next ten years?
Ten years?
Five to ten years.
The sea level rise is a big one, of course. I think another problem is being able to make it accessible to more people. We've got a waiting list that's eighteen years. Now, I'm on the other side of that. We've had a moorage for thirty something years here. But I know there's a lot of people, they're always dying to get moorings in town and it's a long wait, it's a challenge. Because we have a small harbor, so it's very, it's very difficult to find, you know, locations and so forth. Dealing with the, the infrastructure around the town, you know, with the docks. I know you've done a lot of good stuff to expand some of the docks and I know there's plans to make more dock space. I think that's important. Moorage space is a challenge. And then, you know, safety for all the boaters that are coming and going.
Yeah, thanks.
Brian?
Again, I've heard everything I need.
Kathy? Same question. So what, what is it about your skill set that would be most helpful on the committee?
Well, skill set, I mean, I am a computer science guy. I'm a project manager at Draper Laboratory. I don't have any specific skills as far as dealing with water resources and so forth, but I think what I have is experience around here. I got a practical sense. I've dealt with all levels of, of different levels of people and dealing with being, you know, volunteering on a church committee. I, I think that helps a lot as far as toughening yourself up. When you're on these volunteer committees you get a lot of people coming at you from moorings. And I think I'm pretty good at dealing with people and having a thick skin and not taking it to heart and so forth, so. I think that's important when you're involved in, in town.
Okay. You answered the question I would have asked, which is similar to John's, but thank you very much. Next up, we have David McKenna.
Yeah, I'm David McKenna. I live at thirty-seven Beach Street. I was born and raised in Marblehead for the first thirty years. I spent twenty-five years in Milton raising a family. We moved to Manchester a year and a half ago. My youngest son is a senior in high school. My other two sons have completed school and live in California. The past twenty years, I've been employed at Analog Devices. I'm the Director of New Product Development. I have a P S double E from UMass and an MBA from Boston University. In April of this year, in fact, my company Analog Devices in Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution launched the Ocean Climate Innovation Accelerator. So Analog has committed three million dollars over the next three years towards this consortium, which is focused on advancing the knowledge of the ocean's critical role in combating climate change as well as developing the solutions at the intersection of the oceans and the climate. I hope that my monthly participation in those webinars will allow me to maybe learn something that I can bring back to Manchester and maybe the fishing, commercial fishing here. We have drawn some strong correlations already between ocean temperature and fishing to know what type of species they should be fishing for, things like that. I have attended the majority of the Harbor Advisory Committee meetings over the past year, so I think I know the committee fairly well and its members. And I know they're looking for diversity, so while my, my gender and my race might not be diverse, I do think I have a diverse opinion. And I have voiced it in those meetings in the past. A few examples, I guess. We could have voiced it yet, but I, I did actually let them know I was concerned about the overdevelopment of the harbor and concerned that it's losing its pristine kind of original look and moving more towards something that you would see at Beverly Harbor. Tux Point in Beverly Harbor, which has a whole lot of slips, tons of what I call, you know, that are pilings everywhere. So I would push back on the advisory committee to say, how can we reduce the amount of pilings that are in the harbor? We have boats out there for six months. The other six months, the floats are put in the inner harbor and the pilings are honestly quite ugly. Again, I grew up in Marblehead. The vast majority of the floats in Marblehead do not use pilings. They are tied to shore, use anchors. Why do we need pilings in Manchester Harbor? It's a well-protected harbor. I would just push to say, let's try to minimize the pilings. I think they're an eyesore. I would take, have get an expert opinion on the Crocker and Manchester Marine Slip Expansion. There are great companies and we want to keep them healthy, but at the same time having them expand with slips, as I think you're all aware. That could become a navigational safety issue. I think it also impacts, again, the harbor aesthetics. Another point I am concerned about is Harbor Master's Office. Again, anytime we're going to develop something on the harbor, limit views and access to the harbor is concerning to me. I think the current Harbor Master's Office meets the needs of the town. Boating season is like thirty percent of the year. Harbor Masters in his office fifty percent of that time. That's fifteen percent of the time he needs to be in the office during the boating season. It would need to be near the harbor. And if we're talking about safety or something, I just don't see it. I don't see the data. So again, this is a different view than I think the current committee has. So I think I can bring that different view and maybe convince some people, otherwise, I don't know. I'll stop there.
You own a boat?
I own the boat. I used to trailer it and use the nice ramp here. Sold it and got a small inflatable that I now keep behind Reed's Park.
Okay, well, I assume you do not have a moorin' because we all know it's a lifetime.
Correct.
And you've only been around it a couple of years. Okay, so, okay. You, you kind of went down your list of these are your primary concerns in terms of harbor and kind of what you see. So I think I'm, I'm pretty good for now. Thank you.
Brian?
I, I do appreciate you kind of that list. Your candor is appreciated.
Two things. Once again, I'll thank you for your diverse opinions. I, I think when we look to, that's one of the things I'm looking for as we assemble this team is diversity of thought, because when you get diversity of thought on a team, you wind up with a better solution than with everybody thinking the same way and groupthink. So thank you for expressing your opinion. Same question as asked everybody else, your specific skill set, what do you think you bring to the table in this area?
Yeah, at my company, I need a lot of meetings that help facilitate the meetings. Good organizer. I come prepared to meetings. I could take meeting notes if that's what the committee wanted, someone to do the meeting notes. I see a lot of the committees in town are prompting getting their meeting minutes up and available for others to see. I would make sure that would happen with the Harbor Advisory Committee, if it's available one month later.
You, you did mention a lot of items and again, I would say thank you, Brian, for, for coming west of that. Where? If you had to pick what you think is the most, the most time-sensitive problem for us right now, what would that be?
Let's say it's the Crocker's and Manchester Marine Slip Expansion. It needs a review. I mean, those, obviously those companies have their right to grow their businesses and they've been great companies, I'm sure, for the town and we want them healthy, but at the same time, I think it could impact the aesthetics of the harbor. There's a lot of slip space. Does anybody know how many slips there are? Um, it's, it's a pretty big number. I know in this, in this harbor here, it's just the inner harbor alone. I think it's a hundred fifty boats are kept in the inner harbor here and fifty percent of that is, you know, slip space, but I, I think it's a concern. I put it at the top of the list.
And what do you find is most most critical attribute of the harbor?
Well, I think what we all want is access to the harbor. We want to make sure that everybody has fair access to the harbor. I understand also, I don't know if it's going to be the Harbor Advisory Committee, but the Select Board is planning to do a Manchester Harbor Plan. I have looked at the Marblehead Harbor Plan. I did attend their public meeting on September nineteenth to go over their findings. I think it's consistent with what would happen here in Manchester. And it's access to the waterfront, maybe, you know, what they're trying to do is something similar to Manchester and have a harbor walk available for people so they can enjoy the harbor. And again, we want to continue to support our commercial fishing activities. And then we'd be concerned with the sea level rise and storm surge and have some risk mitigation plans, you know, especially mislocation here.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have Skip Crocker. Skip, would you unmute yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You sure can, thank you. And can you tell us what, what has prompted you to cast your hat in the ring for Harbor Advisory Committee?
Couple people reached out to me and asked me if I'd ever considered being on the Harbor Advisory Committee. Been asked several years in the past. Not sure if it's a conflict of interest or not with me being a business owner in the harbor. But enough people have asked, I decided I'd give it a shot. Been working on the harbor now since I got out of high school in eighty-nine. I'm in and around the harbor almost every day, interact with a lot of different customers. We service a couple hundred boats in the harbor and the surrounding communities. Obviously, I have my projects coming up. So that's sort of it. I mean, I got a working knowledge of the harbor, I'm a third-generation owner of Crocker's Boilyard. I've been there seventy-six years. Started by my grandfather in forty-six and I took over in two thousand nine.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much, Dan. And I will say, we have had other business people involved
Yeah.
committees for the town before. So, okay, John Round, any question?
Yeah, a, a couple of questions. Skip, have you been involved in other town committees or is this your first try, public, dealing with public committees?
Uh, not in Manchester. I'm actually a not a resident of Manchester currently. I live in Essex, but I've been a on the planning board for nine years in Essex. I was on the Long-Term Planning Committee, Strategic Planning Committee. I'm also a volunteer firefighter in Essex.
Okay, all right. So you've had some exposure to public committees for sure. Uh, yeah, so I'm interested in your perspective as to what the, the, the biggest issue, the biggest near-term challenges are for the harbor and you live there every day, so you ought to have some opinions on that.
Well, I think there's a lot of good concerns going on around the harbor. I think it seems like everybody has a different idea what is a priority. I actually think the biggest thing to get the ball rolling on any of it is putting together the Harbor Master Plan. I'm not exactly sure what the best way to approach that is, but I know Bions has some experience with that and I think that would be a good start. Obviously, the environmental concerns, sea level rise, climate change, harbor access, commercial, you know, input to the Harbor Committee. I do work pretty closely with Manchester Marine on different things. So I do think it'd be good to have, you know, the boilies represented on the Harbor Advisory Committee. There's a lot of industry information. There's a lot of industry information that we're exposed to that we could bring to the harbor advisor committee and the town.
Okay.
Thank you, Skip. Brian?
No. Your comments and questions.
Kathy?
Well, I think you answered my question that I have asked everybody else regarding skill set, but is there anything else you'd like to add specifically regarding skill set? Certainly, you're a business owner on the harbor, but. Is there anything else in your background that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Oh, really? I mean, pretty much the boyart is pretty much everything I've done. It's my backyard, literally. My family's owned it for seventy six years. So I've been up and down that harbor. A fair amount. I've dove in it, I've swam in, I've sailed in a powerboat on it, I've worked on it. I'm there pretty much every storm, involved in a lot of the changes. I have been pretty active in the past with attending harbor advisory committee meetings. Always seen involved in dredging and moving the moorings and all that, pretty much. Touch base with Bayern, spent quite a bit of time talking to Bayern once or twice a week, even in the off season. Just trying to keep up to speed on everything he's got going on and trying to keep him informed of. What my business is involved in and what we got going on. So it's, I'm there every day interacting with all the different boat owners. I work with a lot of different other boatyards and other towns, other cities, and know what they're up against and, you know, work. Talk to them, discuss their solutions to ongoing issues, whether it's Marblehead, Gloucester, Salem, Beverly. Just working relationships within the industry.
Thank you. Thank you, Skip. What? If you were to have. What do you think is the most valuable aspect? And I would say that's. Of the harbor. It's a very broad question, I know. How would you, what do you think is? Most valuable about our harbor?
There's so many different. Aspects of it. I mean, it's one of the prettiest harbors, you know, north of Boston, from Boston to Maine. If you're a boater in a storm, it's the place everybody wants to be. It's protected. With buying there, it's very well managed, better managed than it was prior to buying being there. But there are a lot of changes in the industry, in the boating world. It's growing. And being able to manage harbor use and harbor access. So it's a lot, there's a lot going on, but it's a beautiful harbor and everybody wants to be there, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Skip. Appreciate it. Next, we have Jim Doucet is. Get me out there. You saying, Brad? Okay. Jim? If you are on the Zoom, would you please unmute? Okay. Moving right along then, we have Jim Starkey. He'd like to talk a little bit about why you're interested.
Yes. My name is Jim Starkey. I live at thirteen Tuck Point Road. I've had a boat in the harbor for over forty years and I've owned a house on the harbor for over thirty years. My first involvement with the harbor advisory committee was in early nineteen eighties when. Two different dredging projects, it's now called Area E, and all the moorings were taken out. And I wrote a little bit of custom software and orchestrated the process where we relocated all of the moorings to get maximum. Packing density. The Harvard committee actually laid out where the moorings would be on some chart papers and set up a system with a couple of boats and baki talkies and a couple of piano lights and. Very accurately put the moorings down. In two thousand ten, I was appointed to the Harvard Advisory Committee and shortly thereafter, I was elected as its chairman. The primary issues at that time were harbor administration and transparency. My term ended on the Harvard committee with these issues still unresolved. And I did what a seller would say, took another CAC. And put together, I drafted a proposed harbor bylaw. For considering my timing. The two parts of the bylaw that were important is the first is. That it requires that all lists, mooring lists, reading list, mooring change list, be posted both to Town Hall. And on the town website. The second part of the bylaw defined the role, the position of harbor master as full time, at least between April and October. And during that period. The harbor master could hold no other appointment in town. So I got the signatures to put it on the warrant, came up at town meeting. It was hotly debated. The debate started at eleven fifteen at night. And. Two hundred people stayed through eleven forty five to vote on this. And it passed overwhelmingly by more than two to one. Vote. That was, that was just really absolutely wonderful. And as soon as the vote was over, the two hundred people stampeded to get out of there and go home. Barely got the meeting closed. The result of the Harvard bylaw, which is now part of our bylaws, is that it opens position to bring in Brian. And. I will take a significant partial credit for bringing Brian, Brian to town. And that is the best thing that has ever, ever happened to our harbor. So I'm very, very pleased with that. Brian has brought fresh air, transparency, fairness to the harbor. It's a very happy harbor. People like each other. People like Brian. He stops by, he chats with people. He knows everybody. I'm very, very pleased with that. It was a hard slot getting that done, but it was well worth the effort. With the Harvard administration under control, my next concern was very much towards dredging. Some of you know that this is not a natural harbor. This is a natural mud flat. Until nineteen hundred, it was a stinking mud flat. So it was first dredged in nineteen hundred and has been dredged periodically since as a harbor. On, for various reasons that are too complicated one right now, dredging has been significantly, was significantly neglected for about twenty years. And so we're way behind the ball. Major parts of the harbor are filling in. So I looked at the problem, I did the homework on the permitting, on the engineering, particularly in the cost structure. For for dredging projects. And I got what they did at Kruton, you know, past surveys of the harbor. And I wrote a Windows program. Which we developed as a pathological model of the. Of the harbor over the time period. And if he was able to vote back and. Look at what was filling in at what rate, but more importantly, it could project forward about what we could expect the harbor to be like. So I brought this to the board of selectmen and said, we have a problem with the dredging. And the problem. One is mud and the other is the harbor advisory committee at the time decided it wasn't interested in dredging period, wouldn't take it up. So I suggested to board the selectmen that we set up a dredging advisory committee. They agreed, they appointed committee, and I became its first chairman. We. It was an interesting experience. We extended the program to be able to model. The costs given the parameters of any given dredging project. And another section of it, which would extrapolate the cost going forward, the cash flow in the dredging fund. We looked at about a half dozen different strategies for dredging the harbor, you know, maximal, minimal. And we eventually coalesced around a single strategy, which we condensed into a thirty year plan. With financial projections. Which the town is now operating on.
Jim?
Yes.
This is, it's actually very interesting, but you are, do you have? Some more sort of, more of a synopsis of what it is that you would like to bring to?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
As I see it right now, there are two primary problems with the harbor. It's a lot of old stuff, but the two big ones, the first one is dredging and the problem is paying for dredging. It's phenomenally expensive. It's on a tune of six thousand, six million dollars per project, and we need to do one about every five years. So the projections. Show a deficit in the Harvard dredging fund by like twenty eight million dollars, not right away, but down the road. So getting that funded, but that's not exactly something that the harbor committee can do by itself and work with other organizations. But that, that is, that's absolutely critical because we don't dredge, we don't have harbor. The second is something that I think is very, very important. Sea bottom in Massachusetts is owned by the people. This kind of goes back to ancient Greece, but it's owned by the people. It's not owned by the state. And the Commonwealth holds the sea bottom in trustee for the people. The Commonwealth in turn cedes administration to towns to manage their harbors. Which is, we happen to be able to give out mooring permits. So while we have the responsibility to manage our harbor bottom, we haven't. There are various projects going on for which we have no say. Everything's being deferred to the D P K rather than done locally. So I think. We have the responsibility to manage the harbor. We don't have the tools to manage the harbor right now. And I think we need to sit down, think very long hard about what the problems are, work with other boards and come back with the recommendations to board the selectmen. Probably for a new bylaw, which I would like to see before the next town meeting. I think this is absolutely critical. There are two commercial projects that are currently ongoing. There's one private project, all of them affect sea bottom and directly affect. Land that is controlled by the town. And I think we need to have say over that. And I don't think we have it right now. So. To answer your question. We absolutely need to get control of the harbor. And I, I have looked at a long time ago when the. Planning board wanted to do a harbor overlay district as part of the approved harbor plan. When I looked at it then, and I really happened to refresh myself with it, the harbor, an approved harbor plan gives you almost nothing. It's for big cities. The only thing that it would have allowed us back then. Was to raise the maximum height of buildings on the harbor, which is frankly, not something we want to do. So I think looking at the, the problem is getting direct control by the town boards who actually understand something about the harbor is something that is critical to the harbor future. So.
Thank you very much, Jim. John Round, question?
Well, Jim's covered just about everything, I think. I'm having a tough time coming up with questions and you've had one tour of duty on this.
I've had one tour of duty.
And you're coming back looking for another, so.
I'm coming back. I've also chaired a couple other town committees, you know, in addition to the Harvard stuff. I was the founder chairman for my friend, I did search advisory committee during High Street Internet at Manchester. I'm working very closely with. Ellen Wilson and our town clerk on the. Security of our clicker systems for town meeting. I also will take full credit for installing Internet in this building for the first time, a long time ago. And trying to mine, I put together the town's first website before it became the official website. So I've been done a lot of things in town, some harbor technology. I really like Manchester. I really like the harbor.
Great. That comes through. Thank you.
Excuse me. You did a lot of, you were very busy. Why did you stop? Why did you get off the board?
Well, then what?
Why did you get off the board?
Do I take it off the board? Oh, that's very simple. I wasn't reappointed. Oh. There's a long story there. This isn't the time.
That's not the time. Okay, no, it wasn't a voluntary.
Oh, no.
Kathy Bellato?
Just one question. You've expressed two very big concerns that you have about the harbor, the dredging and the management of the sea bottom. I presume those concerns have been relayed to the existing committee. Have those two big concerns that you have about our harbor been relayed to the current harbor advisory committee?
Of course.
And, and the reception has been?
I have been in close communication with my local swim person. This has been discussed by, by another great buddies, we need to go and chat. And yes, but Brian is very constrained in what he can do. And you know, harbor bottom is not something that state wants him to do. Responsibility is defined by the state. He can't really go beyond that. So I think he's a great job, but I don't think he can do anything about this problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to ask a question?
You've already answered mine. So I think we're all set there. Thanks very much, Jim. We have the Jim, have Jim. Rob, Jim Doucet? Okay. I would like to invite the chair of the Harvard Advisory Committee, Carl Don, to speak a little bit, if you wrote about. What the Harvard Advisory Committee does and where you feel. The types of deficits on the committee you have right now. If you're a member of that. Thank you for taking on that task, by the way.
You didn't ask me. Well, I'll do the best I can. Carl, the chairman of Harvard Advisory Committee. I was first appointed as to be in the committee. It's got to be ten to twelve years ago. And at that time, Jim Starkey's father-in-law was the head of the Harvard committee. And I think I was in the committee for ten to twelve more years. He was a great mentor. And at the time, when I, we, I was in the committee, they were doing the. The last dredging before the, the time span that they didn't. And Jim and Ann Stark, Jim and Ann were. Out there helping her father, his father was helping them, trying to get the buoys back. So this went through a lot of aggression. So I, I've been through three or four dredgings. Jim Starkey did a great job, Ann did a great job trying to get the harbor back in shape at that time. I believe it was nineteen eighty seven, the last time he did. So I was on the committee, got off the committee because, you know, ten to twelve years, I had other things to do. And then Brian came by and said, would you like to be in the committee? This is five, six years. I said, no, Jim, I said, Brian, I've got a lot of things to do. I've got my own business, I'm the owner of boats. I said, other people are out there. So he kept after me and. I finally, okay, I'll come on, I'll be a member of the committee. Three or four years later, he said, would you please chair, chair the committee? I said, no. And you can see where it got me today.
Yes.
The Harvard Advisory Committee is exactly what it says advises. The select people, the selectmen, the select women, it advises those people with the input that we get from the townspeople, from the voters. From Brian Pike, who was the harbor master. We take all of the input. We sit down at the meetings. We always have open meetings where people can call in, discuss things. Question us. We try to give the answers as best we can. We always have people say, well, yeah, I didn't care about the meeting. They can always see us in town. I'm in town. I work in town. The rest of the committee people, they. The rest of the committee people, they are out of town, but they always make the meeting and pretty much uh good, good shape. Do we have a good sense of what's going on in the harbor? I think so. Do we have some situations? If you look at what has been done in the harbor for the last ten or fifteen years, we've come a long way. We've repaired things, we put things together, we've done a dredging that was done four or five years ago, we have one coming up in twenty twenty five. We have a deficit because in the old days, way way back, the state and federal gave us seventy five percent. Seventy five percent, so it was a hundred thousand, we only paid twenty five thousand, state and federal, they were good to us. And all of a sudden, all of a sudden, for all the years, it went away. And so we had to scramble to see if we can get some more money, which we've been doing ever since. The last go around with the last dredging, uh, four or five years ago, the state came in and gave us a check for half a minute. And we had enough money, we got through and we're in good shape. The next time, right now. Jim could back me up or give me an answer, I think we're up over three and a half million, probably closer to four ballpark at this time. Do we have enough money coming in revenue? No, not at this time, but are we doing things to bring it in, we have taken the. Uh, stake, the people who are stakeholders, so the moorings, you push that up as far as we can, we're one of the highest ones on Cape Town. Uh, not the highest ones in the state. We have gone in and asked the selectmen if we could assess the stakeholders on extra amount of money, so we have more money in the pot. When it comes up, they said, sure, let's do that, and it's based on the length, size of the boat holder, the stakeholder. Uh, we can, we have a bond issue that is in place, if we need it, it's been there for five years, we didn't need it. For the last go around, we may need it for this go around. And by it has said there's a waterways group that would also be uh available to give us money, so. We've tried to put things together for the dredging, that's one of our main concerns. The environment, we're always talking about that, uh, the town is interested in doing things with the um with touch points. The last go around that we did with the uh dockage up there, that is all set if and when we have to take the whole thunder up. And reposition that. The rampway and everything else that's up there can blend into whatever the project is designed for, because of the engineering work that was done. Um, we've got all the docks in town pretty well in shape. Brian rebuilt a good number of them for short money in the winter time with help from some of the people in the water department. Built built a lot of the places up at the water department in the space they had. So the dockage is good, uh, we have docks down at Reed Park, which bring in revenue. It's up around fifteen thousand plus, I think it's closer to twenty. Um, brings in revenue that the people that work there are paid, there's students, other people full-time, part-time. And the extra money goes into the harbor fund. So people say, why do you want more dockage up there, going towards the drop bridge? Well, that'll bring in more revenue. Uh, well, we don't need the docks, well, we could use them, it's going to bring in money. But the harbor is is too busy, well, before people come in, turn around and and they cause a lot of confusion. Brian has made a highway into the harbor, he's removed moorings, he's put some others in the same area. In the fishermen's area there, the moorings are foreign act. So the boats don't swing depending if it's east, west, north or south. So it's easier to get in and out of the harbor, that was all done by the harbor master. Everything was run by the Harvard Advisory, everything was run by the uh selectmen at the time. So we're working constantly to make things better, if we have a nice highway in here and people want to come in and stay overnight. And have dinner here and get ice cream and shop for their goods as they're on the way to Maine. The old days, you'd have to go to Manchester Reed, they'd say, you have to walk around the Hoopers or someplace like that to get groceries. Now they can come here and they can get their groceries. Lot has changed in Harvard, but it's still good, we've got more to do. When the ramps fell down or the stone work fell down by the lobster's dark. We took the canopy and moved that, we put in new stone, we put in stone, we focused that. We did the lift over there for the lobster. If something gets broken, it's brought to the attention of the harbor advisory committee, we work with the harbor master, we work with the selectmen. And we do whatever we have to do, and it's been done. We do the right things all the time. We ask people in town, we always ask the questions, and the phone is always open on that Wednesday night at five, six or seven o'clock. Whenever we meet, second Wednesday of the month is where we have them. I see people in town when I'm working or walking around, as does the harbor committee. We have an open channel, people belong to the Harbor Boat Club, the Yacht Club, they work in town. They fish in town, they use the docks, so we've got a good cross section of people. The people on the committee are varied. Uh, and that's what we would like to keep, we're looking to get a couple more people on there, that's why we're interviewing tonight. We want something to work and do the best thing for the town as far as the harbor goes. It's a jewel in the ground, Tom Smalley used to be. I think chairman of the Harvard Committee or work on the finest, excuse me, this is probably twenty years ago plus, twenty five. The the way the top power harbor was set up, it paid for itself because of the boatyards, the taxes over there, the people that work there. Everything else else was done to Harvard, I'm going to say thirty years ago, since then, it's been become more expensive, can we pay for it now? No. But there are different areas that we go in the state. To get some money to get get this thing going, so I'm. Cautiously optimistic by twenty twenty five, we'll have a good amount of money. I think the state will come through and the waterways people will come through. Uh, and with the money we save and get back from the mooring fees there, I think we're in pretty good shape. Uh, there's a lot of other things we can do, but we are limited, as other people have said, it's a small harbor. But it's a great harbor, and we manipulate it and use it to the best of its ability. Um, and we've got a taxi service, we've got two boatyards. We've got access to the harbor with dockage, touch point, the main harbor here, town hall. I think it's a pretty good package, and I think the Harvard Advisory Committee is doing a good job. They don't just do stuff and say, okay, it's got to be done. Townspeople, other people that work for town, we get together and then we present it to the select people. And that's what we've been doing, and uh I hope we, I hope we continue to do that for many, many more years, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, very much, um. I I typically, we wait a couple to the next meeting to make the appointment.
Question, I I'd just like to ask Carl a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
All right, Carl, it's a very complete summary, I I'm interested in in a couple of things, one. What do you see as the the near-term biggest challenge in the harbor, because you listed a lot of problems for which you've had. Solutions over the past several years, but A, what's the nearest term thing, and then I'm not sure who's on the harbor committee now. But uh, is there any particular skill set or knowledge base that you say, gee, I wish I had somebody to ask this? And I know you've got a wide range of friends and maybe outside of the committee is all that.
Yeah.
Uh, within the committee, so the first question.
The the problems in the harbor?
The the number one issue that you say, this is the, this is the thing we got to challenge, we got to tackle over the next couple of years.
Um. I would say sandal coal. It takes a lot of time from the people who worked in the town. On the harbor roof under by, it takes a lot of time. And that's more time than we have ever used to spend on policing the harbor. And this thing has just morphed at Sandal Cove. And I tell people, I said, you know, we can't go to the town every year at town meeting and say, we need. One, two or three more halftime. Harbor masters, because this thing is getting like a mushroom, it's growing and growing. So over the winter, there will be some changes made as to how Sandal Cove is used. Some groups uh are concerned about that, who use Sandal Cove. Uh, I would, I'm saying that the changes are going to be made or will be made to take care of people, to make it safe. Right now, when I go by there to go out, go sailing. In the morning, it's not too bad, when I come back in the afternoon, late afternoon, I I would want, I'm not happy with the amount of votes we see over there. So something has got to be done. The chief, the harbor master, harbor advisory committee will be working over the winter. Uh, to address the issue, and there will be changes that will come along next year.
And the second.
Second question was really the skill set within your um committee right now. Is there any particular resource or knowledge that you wish you had or that you need more of or perspectives that you need more of?
Yeah, I I think what what I look for in people is they, they have to be able to talk to people, to listen to people. Listen to problems and be able to solve problems. You know, we've got a lot of issues out there. We've got big issues and little issues, how do we address them? So I want some input from people, they can have many degrees or one degree or no degree. We want commercial fishermen, we have that commercial fishermen on our boom there, and they give us a bunch of information. We have people that have worked in town. That, you know, are working on the waterfront, we want some of those people there. Um, we have people who are sailors, they're power boaters, they have lobster boat, we want some of those, that type of people there. Are we going to get what I, what we need in every person? No, if we get a little bit from all of the people that are on the committee. It seems to run pretty well. And the committee we've had so far, the last five years, I think we've chugged along pretty good. And uh, we will continue to do that.
Yes, you've got, you've got a variety of folks providing input from several different perspectives already.
Yes.
It sounds like, okay.
Ryan?
No, I'm good.
Kathy?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, just kind of pulling the thread that John has here, um. Do you have today, representation from commercial fishermen? On, okay, and that person is?
Chris Cole.
Chris Cole, okay.
And we have Dan, uh, Dan Lane, who is a lobster.
Okay, great, and then what about representing downtown businesses, um, any representation from?
None at this time.
None at this time. And then, um, obviously you've got boaters from Manchester who are on the Harvard Committee, what about? Boaters with experience outside of Manchester?
We have a couple, several.
More on the committee today?
Yes.
And they've lived outside of Manchester or have some other experience outside of Manchester from Harvard?
Only experiences outside of Manchester.
Great, and um, I think those are my questions, thank you.
None to me, I think they were well covered. Um, unless there are any other questions from the committee or board members?
No, maybe you want to see if there's anybody online.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to ask a question? Great. Okay, um, what we typically like to do is um. Take a couple of weeks to go over the applicants and. We will then come back to this at our next meeting with the decision. Um, this is, like, uh, we have six people buying for, is it two slots, Carl? So, um, and these are three-year positions?
Yes.
Right, wow, this is wonderful and such a variety of skill sets that are being being um brought from everybody, thank you so much. To all the applicants, and do any of the applicants have anything else they would like to say to the board? Or at least they want to say good night to you.
I'll just, I actually all add one thing, coming into it, I would have no preconceived notions of anything about the harbor, to be quite honest. I just want to help out anyway, again.
Great.
I've got the experience in the harbor, um, but I don't have any preconceived notions or gems. So, why don't?
Okay. Thank you, Steve. All right, well, thank you all very much, um, and we have much to think about. And it's just wonderful to see so many people stepping up to with interest in the harbor, which we all. Appreciate and love, thank you. Okay, um, next up, we have, and before we go any farther, I neglected to say that we are being. Recorded by sixteen twenty-three studio and Zoom. Okay, so first up, we have, um, this is for Bike Ped Committee. We have, and I apologize, I'm going to hurt your name, Jay DiBacio? Jay?
DiBacio.
DiBacio, okay, thank you very much.
No worries.
Um, Jay, would you like to tell us a little bit as to why you are interested in Bike Ped? Be, I mean, you did, I was on the, when you sent us, but synopsis would be wonderful.
Uh, sorry, can you say the last part again?
Oh, a synopsis of why?
Sure, yeah, um, I, my family and I moved here uh just over two years ago, uh, my wife and I and our three kids, they're. Uh, two, four and six, um, so that, you know, they're all either going or going to be going to the uh. Public school here, I'm an avid mountain biker, and um. I felt, you know, sort of duly, uh, like. Passionate and compelled to, A, just be involved in something with the town, I. Have not had the opportunity to do something like this before and sort of contribute in in a volunteer or just any type of community. Role, and um, now that we're found our place to live for long term, I would like to. Just contribute in some way that I can, and I felt like this committee was. Uh, given my kids, you know, going back and forth to school and myself being on the bike and feeling like this town had a lot of potential for growth. And being more bike and walk friendly, uh, I just wanted to, you know, do my part in in helping that grow.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Jay, um, John, questions for Jay?
Uh, yeah, Jay, so I I assume that you've spoken to the chair of the Bike Bike Committee. Is is there uh any particular project or program that you feel passionate about, that you think you'd like to kind of wrestle with? Right off the bat, if you're appointed?
Well, excuse me, good question, I I was actually, I've only attended one meeting so far, so I did get to meet them virtually, uh. And I was like really struck by how much they already had going on, uh, and and in a way, you know, was trying to take, take, take away from expectations I had, I just was. Uh, really kind of wowed, um, but they had brought up um. Projects happening, as everybody knows, I don't, I don't know how you're referring to it, but everything that's going on on School Street. Sounds like it may be some degree happening on Pleasant. Um, that being a street that I see a ton of kids on. And it just, I got, I cringe, you know, when I, when I'm there sometimes just seeing the. Inner interplay between cars and bikes. Um, so I think, you know, if I can, if I can do something to improve visibility or improve safety. Um, for all the kids that are going back and forth on that street and and obviously the people that are walking too, there's a, you know. High traffic area on foot and car and bike, uh, that would be where I would want to put my, put my attention.
Good, thank you, that's it.
Brian?
No, I'm just, I'll be looking forward to uh seeing some of the suggestions. To make this town more right like them. To make this town more right, like, we've got narrow streets and he's going to be curious to see how we do this.
Uh, yeah, just, but I was just kind of going to follow up on what John said. It, it's the bike and pedestrian committee. And obviously you're focusing a lot on the, the biking from a, from an interest standpoint, but also the school walkers, you know, students walking to school. Are there other areas of town that you think could benefit from some focus? Or bike and pedestrian friendliness? And, and really, what does that look like to you? What is bike and pedestrian friendliness?
Well, and again, like, I'm sort of taking, at least, you know, initially, I would like to take like a listen, watch and learn approach to being on this committee. I, you know, following up on what I said, I have not had any experience doing this kind of thing before. So any type of policy and, 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 and changes in town, you know, I don't know what to expect and, and how naive to, to go for, you know, how naive like my expectations are. That being said, you know, I think that downtown area could have some more, I don't want to, I don't know what to say, options, you know, for places to cross the street safely. Maybe a bit better, better visibility for some of the ones that already exist. I mean, I feel like paint is peeling. Uh, I see cars blow by people waiting on the street all the time. This was a big problem that I noticed in Beverly. Uh, when I lived there prior to here and, you know, they did some things that seemed to make it better. You know, th- there were things put up at crosswalks, uh, you know, lights installed. You know, I've got a bit, we live close to the intersection of Pine and, and Pleasant and, uh, yeah, I, I can't even tell you how many times I see people blow through there. So I, I would hope that there's some room to grow there. And like what I would want to see is just things that increase visibility, things that increase, you know, people's awareness that this is not just a place for cars.
Great, thank you.
Anne? The question I would have for you, and I understand that you are new to town. What do you see that has been implemented that you find works well? Um, you've already talked about what you'd like to see more of, but do you see anything that, that bike ped or the town has done that you, to assist with biking and pedestrian?
In town now? Yeah, well, I have noticed, uh, and, and we, they spoke about this in the meeting that I attended that there's been an increase of bike racks. Um, I've definitely seen that more at school and at the, uh, is it called Sweeney Field? I apologize, it's a
Sweeney Park.
Sweeney Park. Uh, it looks like there's more going on there than we first, than when we, than when we moved here. And Terry had mentioned in our meeting that there was some grant money that provided those and that they were looking at having the opportunity to do some more at some of the conservation parking areas around town. So, uh, that looks to me like it's changed. I mean, I, I noticed that before I joined the meeting. So I, I think that's great. And, uh, oh, I think singing beach, or that, those may have been there when we moved there. So, yeah, I think that's, that's, that's something that comes to mind.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jay. Uh, next up, we have Brian Fry.
Correct.
Thank you.
That one, ooh, okay.
Thank you. I, uh, feel like I should introduce myself because my first council meeting here, I'm relatively new, similar to Jay. Moved about eight months ago to Manchester from Boulder, Colorado with my wife. So quick about me, I currently work in public relations for a financial services company. Uh, previously, I've done some PR work and public affairs projects work in Boulder, Boulder, where I've worked with the Boulder City Council, some planning processes and some development processes there. And additionally, worked with the Boulder Chamber and recently graduated from the Boulder Leadership Fellows Program. I'm an avid cyclist and a runner and just really wanted to get involved in local policy and felt like this was an easy way to get in because I saw there was some volunteer needs and some spaces available. So having gotten a chance to meet hardly anybody here yet or the current committee, but really excited to do so. So, um, I've taken a little bit of a look at current meeting notes from the committee and some of the work they've already done. Um, so just, when I come introduce myself, I applied online, filled out the form and they sent me a, a council meeting notes for this, this meeting and I said, oh, wow, I can come and introduce myself. So, hi.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, welcome to town.
Thank you.
I hope the transition has been easy for you. Jay has a little bit more time on him. John, any questions?
Big change, Boulder to Manchester.
Big change, yeah, yeah. I love the town. Yeah, we have mountains, not to worry.
So anyway, uh, have, have you been involved in public committees before of any sort? When you were in Boulder, it sounds like you kind of interfaced a little bit.
I testified on several, um, several issues for city council. Of course, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the city council process and relatively familiar, familiar with the public planning process. Um, but I've been involved in more campaign work. So as, as a political campaign organizer, field organizer.
Well, that's an important skill set. I, I, I would say. Any particular, um, projects that you, you're looking at or would want to address right now that are kind of, that, uh, that issues for you?
So I, I took a look at, um, I think it was the twenty nineteen walk audit that was online that had been done. I just kind of looked, looked at some notes there and it looked like there was some great work already being done. Some approved signage, clearing sidewalks, visibility was a big concern. Um, school safe routes, bike safe routes, especially with traffic. A couple of things come to mind for me, a couple of areas, since I'm on one Harrington Way over Pine near the on-ramps. So that kind of area, a lot of bike, um, traffic going to the tobacco area by the highway on-ramps and off-ramps. Um, so maybe some potential sidewalk or travel route concerns there as people go down to the tobacco area to hike around the college and, um, the tobacco lake area. And then dog, um, waste basket, waste baggie, that's always an issue around town. Just so people know, um, there's a lot of people have dogs here. I have a dog and it's, love my dog, but I also love to know where the waste baggies are, especially with people coming in and visiting town, uh, walking their dogs down.
Well, thank, thank you for volunteering and so quickly becoming a resident, really, uh, a little cautious about that.
I wanted to get involved and, and not, you know, get too involved too quick.
Great.
Brian?
No, I think I just have a question for anyone on the, uh, I can pitch me is, if someone could answer how kids show up at Masco and, and Reed's Park with their bikes and then leave them there for like two weeks after that? Someone's going to, I want to know how they forget that they left their bike there and why no one's looking for it because we grow bikes here in town.
Are you really asking how kids, kids, where do they like?
No, actually, how do your parents say, where was your bike?
Well, I'm not sure.
Yeah, here we, we grow bikes.
Actually, the bikes are coming from Boulder and here, over here.
No, I think that, uh, the, I think I'm excited the fact that you might bring a different perspective to town. We are a small town and I think we have limited, uh, opportunities. Okay, so, uh, so creative use of those opportunities is going to be important.
Yeah, again, thank you to both candidates for stepping up so early and you're, um, welcome to the Manchester life, though. Thank you for that. And I'll ask you the same question. How, how would you define bike and pedestrian friendly? Like, what, what does that mean to you and, and?
Sure, I'd say, um, safety, communication, very important. Um, so pedestrian bike safety, knowing route safety, um, having visibility, um, having clear traffic patterns, uh, very, very important communication component for people who may not be aware of the best routes to take, making sure that they're working with appropriate stakeholders, communication plans, education plans with the community, um, just, you know, making sure everything's available as a resource for people in and out of town.
Thank you, Brian. Anne?
No, I really don't. Our streets are so, many of our streets are narrow and, and it's often exciting when there are two cars and two bicycles. How to get through? Without taking over the sidewalks. So we're looking for people with ideas.
Amazing.
And that was actually my point. I mean, I'm out west, they tend to be, the streets are grid fashion. Very logical, nicely spaced. They're not the little cow paths that have developed into people path. And so how, what would you say that, that, um, in terms of ideas, flexibility of, of thinking, would you, or do you have experience in that?
Um, I can speak from being a cyclist and being a runner. Um, and knowing, for, for example, some of the work that was done in Boulder, having clear bike and walkways, there were, there were several mapping initiatives that were done. There were clear pathing initiatives. So there were clear outlines on maps that were available online to people, um, brochures and pamphlets, trail maps, pathways, um, so that, um, kids, cyclists, runners, people just wanting to walk around know the best routes, safest.
Well, Brian, thank you very much. Uh, is there anybody, uh, from the public who would like to ask either Jay or Brian question? Anybody from bike ped committee on that would like to say something? Okay, um, as I said to the last group of volunteer applicants, we usually take a couple of weeks to, to our next meeting. So we, uh, will come back to making decisions at our next meeting, which is Monday, October seventeenth. Excellent. Thank you so much and welcome to both of you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay. Bye-bye. Bye, Brian. Um, okay, so we are a few minutes ahead of the harbor master plan discussion. So we go back to, I did have some questions regarding, uh, consent agenda of the Memorial School Fall Family Festival. Um, does anybody else on the board have any questions regarding that? John?
Uh, no.
Brian?
No.
Kathy? Anne? Okay, my question, and I don't know, um, with, with the applicant or the part of the application we received, um, I didn't see that there was any, um, insurance that had been taken out or safety. Police, anything, Greg, do you know if that's been?
I don't know.
Debbie, did you see anything come through on that?
No, just the application from Cheryl.
And it was just, all I saw was the first page. My nurse Cheryl often will simply submit the, the first page to us. Is Cheryl on by any chance?
But we can, we can follow up.
Um, I, I, I would be amenable to proving that, providing that we have the insurance in place as well as the safety, uh, um, measures in place. Does that make sense? Okay.
We'll approve the, um, Memorial School Fall Family Festival subject to their providing evidence of insurance and safety precautions, satisfactory to the police chief.
Second, okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta. All in favor, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solis, Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Gates says yes as well. Okay, good, we're done with consent agenda. Why don't we quickly go to liaison updates? John, any updates from you today?
Uh, no, I, I, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape. PPW, no updates in particular. And the Water Resource Task Force has its, uh, periodic meeting coming up, uh, later on this week. So there should be some things that will happen out of that, so.
Thank you. Brian?
No, the, uh, there was some question, uh, questions that are, I think, resolved next week with Pox and Rec as far as pick a ball court's going.
Thank you. Kathy Bellotta?
Um, I think the cricket did a really outstanding job of summarizing ZBA and planning board activity on page one last week. So I have nothing else to add.
Yeah, cricket, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne?
COA, I'm, I'm negligent. Um, the, uh, school board, um, met and discussed and approved, um, school, uh, improvement programs for the high school and middle school. They're continuing to work. The, the board is, as, as you know, many of the people on the board are quite new. And, and they are, it is, it's beginning to come together and people to understand the concerns that each of them brings to the meeting. And I have no, I have, I think I was at the, the con con meeting and they are vigilant about protecting our wetlands.
Okay, and no Board of Health update, so that takes care of liaison updates. We are two minutes ahead of the schedule. Do you want to start anything, Greg?
No, I think if we just sort of get ourselves set up with a presentation, that'll probably take us two minutes.
Okay, all right. So we will be having a presentation, uh, for Harbor Master Plan Discussion. And TRC has given us all a handout. Will we, um, this will be entered into?
Yes.
Thank you.
So are you logged in on Zoom?
I am, I am. It says like share screens. You try that.
Yes, and if you would please introduce, well, we got to wait. Give us about forty seconds, please, if you would.
So what are you? Assistant for screen sharing.
What are you logged in as?
Jason Whitney.
Any luck yet? All right, it is eight ten. If you would like to go ahead and your name?
Okay, um, good evening. My name is Jason Whitney. I work for a company called TRC for environmental consulting firm. My office is in Waltham, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight representing Armand Lozon as well as some of his neighbors. Just a little bit of background, um, we started representing Mr. Lozon back in twenty nineteen when Crocker's moved into their first Marina expansion. Helping him understand the process and submit comments into the Conservation Commission Planning Board and some state about that. And he re-retained us again the summer when Mr. Crocker did another expansion project, really just to understand what was going on and make sure that his rights as a, as a dock owner and a butler are being protected. But as we were going through that, it became evident that, to us, that there need to be more planning in terms of the, the harbor. And, and so we, we sent a letter off to, to Mr. Fersfield and, and copied the boards on it and advanced of the CONCON hearing for Crockers Manchester Marine, which also had an expansion project at the same time. And really, as, as we got thinking about it, and we've had a lot of good interactions with Bayon as the Harbor Master as well in the last few years. Is that really that you think the time's come for the town to embark on a harbor management plan and process? So we submitted a request to Mr. Fersfield to come speak tonight. So here we are. We just have a brief presentation to, to talk about that. So. So a plan is really needed just for the long-term viability, sustainability of the harbor. And this really gives away the end at the beginning in terms of the presentation. But really to, what a harbor plan does, it defines a future vision. It's a visionary type document. A lot of towns do these on, on land planning and what times, what types of businesses we want in a town and that type of shit. It's the same thing, just in a harbor. It really, it's about balance on uses. There are a variety of different uses. I was here for the end of the Harbor Advisory interviews and heard some of that. Really about defining locations. I think that's really the, the crux of what we've learned as we've gone through this process the last few years. Is that, that having some more definition in terms of where the moorings are now, where they're going to be in the future, would really benefit the town. Keeping the maps more up to date. They get updated at the end of the season rather than the beginning of the season. And trying to get that working. I understand there were some GIS issues this year with the maps as well, according to Mr. Pyton, I was talking with him. And really, and this really came out of the most recent go-around with the Crockers and, and with Manchester Marine. It's just really identifying that there should be more interactions in terms of the town boards. You know, obviously, it went both, we'll go to the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board comes next. I believe they have a hearing, I think, next week. I think it's been requested for both of those projects. And, and, and one of the things that we observed in the, the meetings was the Conservation Commission was asking the applicant to get a letter from Bayon Pike of the Harbor Master, rather than going directly to Bayon and saying, what do you think? So we thought that would be part of a, a plan as well. Really, obviously, you know, it's a beautiful harbor here and really want to protect the environmental resources that are around the harbor. And just really provide a roadmap for the, the Harbor Master and the Harbor Advisory Committee to, to work through over a period of time. And then really define also a process for amending it on a set period of time. You know, plans change, uses change over time. And, and I myself, I'm, I, I'm a resident of Watertown. And Watertown has a, a comprehensive plan that defines development within Watertown. And it gets reviewed every, every five or six years. And it's actually going through a, a comprehensive review process right now. I actually sit on the planning board as well in Watertown. So, so we kind of implement that, that plan. In terms of the harbor itself, obviously, you know, I'm speaking to the choir here. I'm sure you know a lot of this. But in terms of pressures on the harbor, recreational boating continues to grow. It grew dramatically during the, during the pandemic. As, as we're all aware, this, that obviously leads to increased demand for moorings in the harbor. And it's also because there are more moorings, they're getting compressed more and more against each other, against adjacent docks, against marinas. And really, there have been changes in uses as well. So the point is like, there's a lot of pressures within this harbor that a harbor plan could really identify what they are, identify what the uses are. And, and try to figure something out over the long term to be a little less reactionary. Obviously, there've been a couple of Marina Harbor expansion, Marina expansion plans in the last few years. Are there more to come? Who knows? But trying to plan that out. That was one of the, the things that we heard from the Conservation Commission in terms of two projects earlier this summer. And then obviously, climate adaptation, resiliency, it's a whole lot of part of rising. There's been, being able to adapt and to be more resilient as a harbor going forward. So just as examples, you know, harbor plans are not an unknown thing in Massachusetts. There's two ways that harbor plans can be done. Both, you can get advice from Coastal Dome Management Office in the state, uh, in the Energy and Environmental Fair. There are local plans, which the local body does the plan themselves. There are a number of towns on the, on the North Shore here, Rockport, Newburyport, Salisbury, they have those plans. You can see the other list of, of other towns within the Commonwealth that have them. And then there's state-approved municipal plans, which that's really working hand-in-hand with CZM. That allows you, if you so wanted to make changes and adjustments to some of the things that are in the Chapter ninety-one regulation, you have to go through the state process with that. But obviously, it's a state process, so it takes longer. You don't really, it's control your own destiny as much as you would with a local plan. And there are a number of state-approved plans here. I've got an example that I can show you for one piece of it. But really, the, the process, it's like anything, any identify issues, establish goals, define your objectives, and then come up with your ac, your actions to do that. And obviously, you want to assign actions too. And really look at, you know, is the Conservation Commission responsible for a piece? Or is the Conservation Commission and the Harbor Advisory jointly responsible for certain pieces? And it's, it's obviously, it's a process that it takes to, to go through this. So I just pulled out an example from Nantucket's Harbor Plant. It covered a lot of different areas. This, I, I pulled out one about our harbor operations and safety and moorings. And that's really what brought this to the idea tonight. I'm just thinking about those expansions over the past few years. And really, what, what Nantucket did is they went through their process is they had their subject, they had a goal, you know, in terms of harbor operations. Well, being, having a boating environment that's safe, it balances uses, maintains the character of Nantucket Harbor. And many of us have been there and know what that is. There are obviously a lot of natural resources around that harbor too. And then from that, they define five different objectives for the harbor. And then from each of those, there were different recommendations. And if you go into the, the Harbor Management Plan, you can see those. But the point was goal, objectives, recommendations, actions. Here. So and just another piece of this as well, just another, I, what I did here on the slide is I, I grabbed out the text. There's some obviously some background about harbor operations and management. And here it goes on to pages of descriptors about these various recommendations. And they have a summary table in the plan as well, which summarized each recommendation, who's responsible. You know, objective one, recommendation one, it's Department of Marine Resources. You can see that, that they're pretty much responsible for harbor operations down in Nantucket. And this plan is actually an update of a two thousand seven plan that was done. So they, they went through that process and then revisited it a second time and said, where do we need to object or, or interject new things? Or, or change things into the, uh, so. So in summary, so I was going to keep it brief. I know we only have a short amount of time and you want to have some discussion here this evening as well. You know, really, in terms of, as we look at this and, and our thoughts for the town is, is really use though. We would think about using the local process, control your destiny rather than the state process. Maybe eventually embark on a state process. Retain inexperienced harbor plant consultant. There are a number of them out there that do this work. The Urban Harbors Institute has done a number of the plans within the Commonwealth for municipalities. I've been trying to get in touch with, Rich Delaney was, was the executive director of that for many years. He went to the Center of Coastal Studies and since retired. But there's some other individuals down there as well. Jack Wiggins is one of the professors. He's like a senior fellow down there at this point. But they're a really great resource in terms of harbor manager planning in, in the Commonwealth. And then really just, you know, so what, what we would like to see is, is the town embark on this process and, and with a goal of trying to spend the year twenty twenty-three figuring it out and then into twenty twenty-four. And so you have a plan that's ready to go by the boating season of two thousand twenty-four. And, you know, and talking to Mr. Lozon and some of his, his, his neighbors and some other folks in town, they, they are willing to provide some, some level of financial support to the town. So obviously, it's a cost to the town to engage consultants. Potentially engage with the Harbors Institute or whoever, and they recognize that and, and they're willing to, to put in some level of financial support. So that, that's kind of the overview of Harbor Manager Plan. I don't want to do that quickly, but I wanted to try and get done in about eight minutes. We're pretty close.
Great, thank you, Jason. Questions from the board? John?
Yeah, a couple of questions right, right, right off the bat. I, I see the list. First of all, I don't quite understand the difference between local and state-approved Yep. plans, except the state-approved takes more time.
Yep.
I'm shocked. So, um, can you tell me what the differences are and what the advantage is? Why do people go one way or the other?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is on the state process. There, the Chapter ninety-one regulations dictate how docks are built and, you know, a whole variety of things, structures. And one element of it is, is that, is that in some cases, they want to be able to adjust what's in those regulations. Maybe change the dimension between docks or things like that and update Chapter ninety-one regulation. That has to go through the state process to be able to do that. Where you're trying to, in a town, in a local process, you're really trying to say, this is how we vision our town. And then you're allowed to, you can reach out to CZM and they can give you advice about your plan, but they don't really dictate the process. Whereas in the state one, they dictate the process. There's a lot more state-run public input, you know, that goes in the environmental monitor, those types of things. Where a local plan would be more, it would happen at, you know, a committee like this or the committees that you're just interviewing folks for. And then it would be more of a local, a locally public process.
So, so just to elaborate a little bit.
Yeah.
If you want to modify state regs, then you have to do a state-approved plan. If you're okay with accepting the state regs as they are, then you don't need to do that. You can, you can just do a local plan.
Right.
Which assumes no change in state regs.
Well, I don't know how onerous those regs are. I mean, Bayon has to live with all of them. We all have to live with all of them, but I'm, I'm assuming you're okay. I'm, I'm looking down, second question, I'm looking down the list of the communities here. I mean, just most of them, if I were to go up the coast and just say, okay, who's not on the list here? It's a pretty short list of those that aren't.
Right.
Most of them do. Some of them state. I'm, I'm looking at towns like Cohastin, the other sides that we are. They went through the state rule, but most of the towns that have local programs tend to be smaller.
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of the ones that go through the state.
With the exception of New Bedford, which is the big plus.
Right, right. A lot of these plans, also, a big element is dredging. And you're fortunate enough that you don't have to do that that often. You know, I know it's just done within, what, the last five or 10 years here.
Just a portion, just a quarter.
All right, right.
We, we really need to dredge. Oh, because we need to dredge one area every five or seven years.
Yeah, but it's just one area, you know, certain areas like are down the Cape where you have shifting sands, that type of stuff. They're dredging every year, every two or three years. So you are fortunate in that regard that you, you don't have to dredge as often as, as a lot of the other. It's not as a huge issue as, as some of the other communities.
John, any?
Right now, I'll have more in a few minutes.
Ryan?
Uh, just, so on the local plan, residents probably have a lot more to say as opposed to when the state gets involved.
I think the opportunities is for public interaction, no matter what. There is a, is a very public process. There's, it's this, it's the same, except the state kind of dictates, excuse me, the process at the state level. At the local level, you dictate. And so I would say that there's the same opportunity. But I think if it's a local, a locally driven process, you may get more willingness to interact in that process because it's local, you know, more interest because of local.
So my question is centered around how, if we went through a local process, how do you envision connecting the on-water? This is a very on-water focus, okay? But in order to, I, I'm, I guess I'm talking about scope, okay?
Right.
So there was a connection between the water and the shoreside activities, right? I didn't see that connection in what was here. So could you elaborate on how sure we would make sure that whatever we do on water is integrated with the desires of the town on shore?
Yeah, I think you'd be looking at like, what are the uses in the harbor, right? And when I say in the harbor, I'm including like around the perimeter of the harbor as well. So, um, you know, obviously, you've got marinas, you have, you have landowners who have private docks and floats. You have moorings, you have kayak launches, you have the Manchester Duck Club. So you'd be looking at those types of, what, you know, what is the perimeter of the harbor and who are the users of that perimeter of the harbor? I think that's really where you would, if you were thinking about a bounds, you would be thinking about that, maybe the first public way or whatever.
Have any of the towns listed here developed a particularly interesting, integrated on-water shoreside plan or?
I think they all, they all, they all do to some extent. They, they all, they all look at the resources. They look at the environmental resources, the marshes and they look at marinas. A lot of, like I said, a lot of them concentrate on dredging. The, the one that concentrated more on moorings than any of the other ones was really Nantucket. Newport, Rhode Island looked at that as well, but that's, they, they have a pretty good plan, but that was driven by a Rhode Island process, similar to what was done here in Massachusetts, but it was different. But I think they all do. Some of the, some of the towns also, if you think about like Beverly, when there's what's called designated port areas down there as well. And that's, that's another reason you go through the state process as well. If you want to change the, the EPA boundaries, that would have to be through the state process.
Thank you.
I just had a, a kind of, a kind of follow-up. Well, a couple, a couple of issues. First, we have a town master plan. Okay, now, a lot of this dovetails with that. And the master plan touches on much of this because it really only goes to the water's edge. And that's about as far.
Yeah.
But some of that, to, to most of these other plans, I assume many of the other towns have master plans.
I, yeah, yeah, most towns do right now. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
So all how you want to interact the, the, the plans together.
And my second question is, this is harbor plan. But I've, I've looked at some of the other plans, and of course, they have big marshes, they have beaches. When people think harbor, they don't think beach.
Right.
Okay. That becomes part of the scope of this or that's totally up to?
It's totally up to you. Yeah, and that's one of the benefits of doing it locally as well, is you can really define the breadth of it. Or the narrowness, however you want to define it.
We may, we may want to do a harbor plan or we may want to do a waterfront plan.
Yeah, I mean, there's a different terminology, different terminology, because harbor really tells you something.
Anne?
I'm.
What makes you think that the number of moorings is increasing?
I didn't say the number more than, there's the potential for the number of moorings to increase. Obviously, the waitlist is increasing. The appearance, I, I will say, it gives the appearance that it's, and, and Bayon has, has corrected me and others on this as well. The double moorings that are happening now, and it gives the appearance, if you don't look at all the numbers, that more moorings are coming into the harbor.
Yeah, because Bayon reported to us that there are forty-two fewer moorings than there were ten years ago.
And most of the, and most of the reductions, as I understand too, are in the Outer Harbor and Magnolia, is what he had told me when I talked to him. You know, he's got, there's obviously a very big area where he's counting the numbers. And what he, what my understanding was that a lot of that reduction didn't happen in the, the main part of the harbor here, just outside these windows. But it was more down in Magnolia and then the Outer Harbor, where they actually reduced. But there's certainly more demand. And that's, you know, there's going to be, you know, as, as the demand grows, you want to keep people happy, right? So there's that potential for it to increase in moorings. So the point is just to plan it out.
Anything else? A question, you were talking about. A question, you were talking about the plan needed for long-term viability, zones and uses. You said to define, it needs to define locations. Can you be more specific what you mean by that?
Yeah, what we're, what we're thinking is, is, and again, you can make the plan what you want. But what our thought was in terms of mooring locations, right now, they all have, byon has coordinates for the various locations and they are mapped. And really setting those out in advance and, and like we talk, take about, talk about the, the marina expansions that are currently proposed and under review by the town and by the state. They're displacing moorings, right? And nobody really knows where those moorings are going to go at this point. And part of what brought us to this is that fact, it's like, where, nobody's been able to answer like, where will these displaced moorings go within the harbor? Byon's saying, well, they're generally going to go here, but when you start getting closer and closer to docks that are lining the shoreline, you want to make sure that those dock owners, they have a right to be able to get in and out of their docks under chapter 91. And really just planning that type of thing out and saying, these are the zones, this is the perimeter of where the moorings are going to go. These are where the designated fairways are going to be for, you know, if we have a, a stretch of the shoreline, I may say it has like four or five docks along it. Really planning out like, here's the channel, how people can get in and out to those docks. So the moorings are in the right locations to allow that to happen safely.
So then in other words, if somebody else got permission to put into, in a dock, those would then have to be modified again?
Potentially, yeah. Or you're planning that out, saying they have the rights to do a dock up to this far offshore, and that's part of what you look at, is you look at, you know, what's licensed in the harbor, what's not, what exists in the harbor and where? And then really, how does it all interact? So it's about, like I said, it's a balancing of various uses and, you know, people that have docks, that's a use as well.
So do you, you say set a goal of planned completion and implementation before the summer of 24? Is that reasonably doable?
Under the local process, I think it would be, yeah, yeah. It would, you know, we certainly couldn't sit around and, and wait a while to start. You'd want to be hitting the ground running when the, when the year turns or shortly thereafter and give yourself that, that year to do it. Because if you think about it, the voting season starts in, we'll call it April or May. So you give yourself, you know, 12, 15 months to get through that process. Obviously you have to find a committee to get people put on the committee and do the interviews that you did this evening. But I think on a, on a local basis, if you, you set a goal, you can achieve it, you know, or you can get pretty darned close. And by having, you know, we talk about the setting goals, we're doing annual reviews at this point, I'm doing goals for people and smart goals, you know, specific, measurable, actionable, reasonable and time-bound to be in the last one, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have a question before we open it up to public? I would like to ask if byon, if on. I'm sorry? Okay. Is there anybody from the public who would like to ask Mr. Whitney, any question, question?
Hi.
Yes, please state your name and your address.
My name is Arvin Luvan. My address is at Norton's Point. Been a property owner there since 2008. I'm one of the people that hired basin. And I did that because I'm going to butter the Crocker's, I have a professional relationship with Skip. And I also know the butter. And with the proposed changes that he made 2019 and the second one, I don't have a professional background harbor manager. So I went out and hired somebody who does, who buys me as a property. And, and I've gotten educated as a byproduct of hiring basin on much of what basin just touched, based on. My background is I run companies, manufacturing companies, problem companies that are broken for private equity hedge funds. And every company that I've gone into over the last 25 years that's broken, more often than not, they lack a destination. I talk about destination as a long-range plan and what the effects are, what the effect you, decisions you make at the time and what effects that has on the business long-term. Without a long-range plan, you can't understand the consequences of the decisions you make incrementally. And more often than not, they get in trouble. So I, I'm a proponent for putting a master planning in here. And that's where the, that's where the thoughts came in with basin, a couple of my neighbors. So, and I, I think we grew up and, you know, passed the hat to help raise some money to help pay for this because this isn't free. But as a homeowner, the taxpayer obviously, and a dock owner and a boater, I think it makes a ton of sense to have a master plan so we understand with the long-range plan and what this beautiful harbor is going to look like. Because it is a jewel. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll close my comments with, I listened to the last two conservation committee meetings, August 4th, August 30th. And your chairperson for the, for the conservation committee said it best in the last meeting. He said, could we, with these proposed expansions, be at a tipping point? If we had a master plan, we'd know if it was a tipping point, but we don't. We have no idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody on Zoom who would like to speak? Nobody? Okay, well, um, a lot of very good food for thought and very appreciative. Very good, and I, I agree with a lot of what's been said. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Greg?
Do you have a general sense of cost?
I don't off the top of my head, but it's certainly something we could, we could look into. Like I said, I've been trying to get in touch with Mr. Wigan and some others. We can try to get a sense for that. Shoot you an email.
Again, thank you very much. So we have three minutes before we go to the zoning change review.
So just, I'm sorry, just to close out that last agenda item, I'd like some clarity on what the next steps are. We heard a great proposal of great, some great ideas. What's next? Where is the, where, who's got the ball here?
So if, if you feel it's a worthwhile endeavor, that would be step one, to make that decision. Let's assume it's yes. Then we need to think of how we refund it and who's going to run it. So that could be, could be a task force, you could create a special task force like you did, the water protection task force. It could be something of that kind of model.
So I guess what I'm asking is, would it benefit us to just have that discussion right now, get a few extra minutes before the next agenda item? Is there anybody who believes it's not a good idea to have a harbor master plan of some sort or do we not want to have?
I personally would like to have both the harbor master
Okay.
as well as at least the chair of harbor advisory committee. Here, I, I just, I would like to have Darren, but because I'm sure there are a lot of aspects that we are not even aware of.
So could?
To the extent, I think in general, both of them would say yes, they would be supportive of moving forward.
Yeah, but, and as you also mentioned, I also want to know kind of what the cost issue is.
Right, so we will have to.
And how much you can get in outside money. So where you're at with that. I mean, I did see one article and I was on the internet looking at various programs. There was some that were in process and there was one town that said their share was $30,000. Now, I don't know what they got for, was it a matching 50/50 or what the deal was, but they said they, they were paying 30. I remember which one it was, but it's one of four that I looked at.
So if I could propose some next steps, just, I, I think we probably have, if I were to take the temperature of the board, it's more positive than negative for moving forward. And my expectation is that the harbor master and I agree with you, the chair of the harbor advisory committee should put their heads together and come up with a, you know, set of next steps for what we should do. We shouldn't have to do that thinking, they should be doing that thinking and we would approve or adjust their expectations. And however quickly they can do that, that's how quickly we can move forward. My, I, I think I have a personal strong preference at this point to seeing if we can make use of the committees that we already have rather than setting up a separate task force. I know we're going through a governance discussion later in the week. I'm not sure we need another committee or task force, but if we feel we don't have quite the right stuff, perhaps we could shape what we have into something that would take this forward. Because my concern is I wouldn't want the harbor advisory committee and other committees to just go on their merry way and be separate from a, a task force chartered to drive this forward. I think we could shape what we have to empower them to get us where we need to go. That's kind of my thinking, but I know we're going to discuss governance more later in the week, so.
And I would say with that, as long as you have an appropriate mix of, of townspeople, recreational boaters, working boats or people and, and as well as the environmental aspects involved. So the next step then would be to reach out to Carl and byon and with, maybe they can work with Payson Whitney in terms of, or, or get some information from his organization regarding companies that could be doing. I would, I'd like to have several companies from which to choose, right? But at least.
So a shape, shape, they could help us shape an RFI or an RFP. If they have enough for an RFP, that moves it faster.
So when do we want to have this come back before the board?
So I, I think there is a connection between what we might want to do here and the interviews we conducted today. If we, to your point, Becky, if we need to make sure certain skill sets are in certain places, we might want to know that in advance of actually making a selection. So that would be my, I, I would ask them to do that RFI or RFP as, as timely as they can, but also include in that, ask them to come back to us, what are the skill sets, you know, specifically that they have? And what do we need? And, and then we do a matching process and see if perhaps there are still some gaps. Even with the fine candidates we, we interviewed today, we might still have some gaps and we may need to go, you know, pull some other people and nudge them, hey, you know, you've got a skill set we need and this is really important. So I, I like to, you know, shape the team and then figure out who should be on the team.
Possibly a little different in that with the harbor advisory committee, I think we're looking for, we've got three years. With this, if we're talking about implementation, you know, within year and some, that's, that's, that's a very different ask in terms of volunteers. So we might need to look at the idea of a task force, but I do agree with what you're saying in terms of keeping the skill set.
Yeah, because, and, and this goes to the shaping comment I made, because if we're going to be asking a task force, a separate task force to really, you know, run this to ground, perhaps the harbor advisory committee might need to be a little smaller in the interim. We are a small town with only so many volunteers.
Right.
So maybe the harbor advisory committee should be a little smaller and we have some clear boundaries of what they're going to be doing, right? What kind of decisions they're going to make or advise us on while the task force takes on this challenge. That's another thought.
So I would say the next, I'm sorry, John, were you?
Yeah, I'm just saying, we had six candidates here. You know, I mean, it's not like I've been, well, I've been around a long time. You never get six candidates with two slots. So there's a lot, there's a lot of interest in this area. So regardless of whether you're pulling people directly from the harbor advisory committee or whatever, I think we can get people that say, hey, I'm interested in this.
It's about getting the right skills.
Yes, as much as I hear what you're saying, as far as we're, for a small town, we get a lot of committees. I think that a task force might be the way to go, okay? You know, because we'll be looking for disparate, you know, maybe some from Concom would be sitting on that.
And planning board, I mean.
Some recreational boaters, you know, my personal goal on something like this is I see that the harbor is a, is a great economic engine. Okay, this town, Manchester is, is not a tourist destination spot by, by way, by any stretch, okay? But if we can improve the opportunities for boaters, that's going to, that's going to drive and it's going to, I think it's going to improve the downtown businesses. And it's, I think it's going to have some great consequences if it's done properly. So maybe we need someone from the business community to be involved. And to, and to your point, is it a waterfront plan or harbor plan? And those are things that we have to decide.
Okay, so to that end, do we want to have byon and Carl possibly? I, I, I don't know if they can come back to us in two weeks. It's tough, but, but I mean, we also take into consideration that we are going to be working on the warrant, the town warrant for the meeting. But I, I do agree with Mr. Whitney in that we don't want to just push it down the road.
Maybe it would be helpful just for them to come back to us in two weeks and let us know where they're at, right? Here's where we're at and here's where, and that gives them an opportunity to ask us for help if they need help or guidance.
Okay.
So this is something you want to start soon, like the first of the year? And so dollars, right? So if you wanted to put a warrant with fall town meeting to appropriate some money for this.
Yeah, I think that's going to be pushing it too much. I don't see that we could add this to town warrant.
On the other hand, if we don't, we can't start it until.
Until the spring.
Yeah.
But we have no idea about what we're, we're asking. Scope.
Rough order magnitude, how much are we asking?
Well, because we have to finalize the warrant.
Right.
You got, you're meeting on the 17th to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's worth a shot if we, if we can't do it, we can't do it, but we'll never do it if we don't try.
Okay.
When, when the water, when the water resource task force was set up, there was a certain amount of money that it had to work with before there was any budgeted money that was available.
Small amount.
Small amount. It was, yeah, I don't know, what was it, like 20,000 or something?
No, no, under five.
Oh, under five?
Right, so under our, our general professional services.
But we did end up approving.
Eighty.
For. Who was that with?
Scott Harsley.
Thank you, man. Had the witness. Right.
Appropriated so we could.
Okay, rather than, okay. We will at the next meeting see if we can get an idea of something that might be able to put on the town warrant. What do you think?
Worth a shot.
Um, I believe we are not going to review zoning changes tonight, is that correct?
It's up to you. If you want to review where things are at or wait until things are finalized.
I think then we may be waiting until the.
I think then we may be, maybe waiting until the town.
So, well, let's, let's, let's hear from whoever, what is the state now?
So the state is that they are probably two thirds of the way finished with. Final edit. Uh, we hope to do that tomorrow.
The last time I listened, they were still ch- messing with the definitions.
Right. And I think, I think they. Anticipate. A quicker review.
For the harder parts?
Right.
Oh.
Not sure there's much we can review right now since they're meeting concurrently.
Yeah, right now.
Right now, like they. We watch the video as soon as.
Yeah.
See what's up.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think, you know, the basic. Um. Basic parameters haven't changed. There's a set of amendments that are. Uh, administrative in nature and are, are more. Along the lines of a, a reformatting if we, we presented and not substantive. Uh, there, there are a number of proposed substantive changes and that's, we don't have the final word on those. The, uh, how non-conforming uses can expand. Adult entertainment. Set of provisions limiting it to the LCD. Currently it's not, it's, right now it's allowed to be zone, any commercial zone. Uh, so there's that, there's rewriting of the custom development. But uh, debate on that, there's a new section of defining senior housing. And then there's the ADU. Um, revisions that are being captured about. Uh, whether or not. Uh, small ADUs could be a by right use or not. So those, those basic uh, issues still remain, they haven't changed in terms of what they're. What was being proposed, what is, uh, is trying to be finalized is the actual final word.
So is what we have in terms of summary proposed changes for fall special town meetings, the overview. Has this been updated? They don't seem to have a schedule anymore.
It, it, it doesn't have the, that's not final in terms of what is being proposed, but at the beginning, it is addressing. The issues that are on the team.
Okay, I think we need to have. Something before us sooner than the seventeenth. To review, Anne said you wanted, you said you wanted time to be able to look it over and not at.
Right, so I'm hoping by the end of tomorrow night.
Okay.
There's final wording that we can get to you Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
Um, so that you have a week or two to, 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 to read it over and to. You know, get your questions aligned or formulate your own opinions on what's being proposed.
My, my feeling is the biggest problem with that is that we, without having somebody guiding us, I mean, the, the, the bylaws. And the potential changes. Um. We don't understand all the nuances of those. Um, we can see why they're doing the old new and why, you know, what they put here. Um. But I think um, in terms of. Having questions, what is the best way for us to go about doing this without inundating? The chair or vice chair of the planning board with myriad questions.
I wonder if we should set up a special meeting between now and seventeen.
Special meeting.
Just a question, um, scheduling question. So tonight, according to their agenda, they are reviewing the um. Communications plan, which includes the cricket article, reviewing the table for the website. Which is what you're looking at, and the open house plan, the open house is scheduled for next week.
The thirteenth.
Uh, twelve.
Twelve. Did they do the twelve?
So if we would like to have a joint meeting with them, my question is, would you like to have it before or after the open house? And the public comment?
I mean, it should be before.
Give us a lot of time, but I just wanted to throw that out there because I think it's, we've got ten days before the. Less than ten days for the open house.
Right, and they're meeting on Monday, which is the tenth, at least that's what um.
They have a full agenda to do that.
Okay, the tenth is a federal holiday.
Mm-hmm.
I'll see the eleventh.
So I guess the eleventh.
No, I don't see anything. On the town calendar.
But we don't put anything on the town calendar until you've got a full agenda.
Right.
But, so it's not very useful.
I'm sorry, the upcoming meeting schedule for them is, is the fourth, the eleventh and the twenty-fourth.
So it is the eleventh, alright, because I did know they were meeting, let's just shut up with Ron quickly. Um, okay. Uh, so it looks as if. They have a meeting on the eleventh, which, and they're not going to want to do. Uh, we can't meet, it's the twelfth is in their open house, so the eleventh and then the twelfth. Um.
They've listed on their um, agenda, the following meeting is October twenty-fourth.
And we finalize on the seventeenth.
So in terms of. Uh, what's needed, so on the seventeenth, what you need to do is finalize the warrant.
Right.
That doesn't mean you need to finalize your position.
Right.
Um, on the warrant articles. Um, so you could meet after that to do a more. Deep dive, deeper dive into.
Into the motions.
Into the motions and decide what your, your position recommendation is on each one. So the, there's, there's not a. A, a requirement that you do that prior to the seventeenth.
To be honest with you, I think I would feel more comfortable if, if we do have a special meeting or anything with the planning board, having it after the open house because they're. They're, they're doing that open house to get more public feedback, would they, or not, they're just going to communicate it and just go, okay. Alright, so then I'd still like to hear the. Comments from the public before we. It would inform my opinion, I think, on whether or not I can endorse a particular change.
Could we have them come on the seventeenth? And that way, if we have any questions, because some of us, you and I are going to be there for the open house anyway. Um. That's like.
I will.
Conversation for her.
Hold on, you're doing the conversation for it. Now can others, can we go as just residents or we shouldn't go? You're going to do your.
We're encouraged to go. Um. So long as.
Absolutely, but we don't want to deliberate, so that's why.
Right.
Open meeting.
So um, let's see, we'll see if they can, somebody can attend, ten seventeen?
Do you have a sense of seventeen?
Of the agenda?
Yeah.
I don't think I have much going on.
No, I can't.
No.
I think it's pretty open up seventeen.
Okay. So far, so we have buy on and Carl added on, we've got uh, someone from planning board on the seventeenth.
And we have the warrant.
Bless you whomever sneeze. Guess we had somebody out there. Okay, alright, uh. Next up, we have the special, I'm sorry, go ahead Greg.
So, just, so, stick to the seventeenth and see if that's sufficient and then if we need more after that, we'll decide at that time.
That's unagreeable.
Okay.
Okay, when do we get the final copy? Cause I, I have reviewed this twice.
Hoping you get the final copies sometime this, later this week. That's my expectation. Assuming they finish up tomorrow night.
And most of our questions. Shouldn't be diving into the legalities or, or it's. More an understanding like the rest of the public. Correct? Yeah. Not our.
One question. Are we rushing this? I know we're going off in three years.
Five, no, we're not rushing this.
Okay, I'm just, my concern is that if, if the message isn't delivered clearly, this is going to crash and burn.
The biggest problem is, I, in my opinion with this, is that there's a small. Um. Subsection of people who are. Um, if they really want to know the whats and the whys and the intricacies, then they should probably. Read the bylaws and then. Talk to a land use professional. That's what we have our board elected for is to be able to do that. Um, and not every single. Person know each file. I think it's great when people want to understand, it certainly is, but, but. I think some, some of it is being taken down. Um, rabbit holes that I don't think are appropriate.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm with that, that's my, my point is. It's my experience that, that if I don't totally understand something, I'm not going to vote for it. And if the uh, if the message hasn't been simplified. For the bulk of the electorate, we allegedly have a little more insight because we're living this, okay? And if we're confused, imagine what the general public's.
And that's my point, Brian, is that, you know, back to one of your comments you made early, early on. Let's let our boards and committees do their job. This is one of those instances. We have the people who are on the planning board. Who ostensibly have read the bylaws and understand. Their specific roles in that, or on the ZBA, having read the bylaws.
Um, this, but that's not what I'm saying, okay? What I'm saying is this, then it has to go before town meeting. Alright, and those, the general public might not have that same view of, okay, these are professionals. They, they've done their homework, we're going to agree with them. I, as, you know, again, keep it simple, and if it's not simple. They're not going to vote for it.
But it's, that's just it, these are laws, these are bylaws, and by nature, they're not.
Yeah, the collateral, some of the collateral they are trying to finalize is intended to make it as simple for people to understand. As possible, and it's, it's, they've reduced the number of pages, we've simplified the language. I haven't seen the final version, but I think they're trying.
Now, we're, we're, we're running out of time.
And I understand what you're saying, but they.
And, and I don't want to shove this and rush this and all of a sudden, that's five years worth of work that's gone by the wayside.
But there's only so much simplification in terms of legal. Big bylaws.
No, I, I.
So far, you just need to let the voters vote.
Let the pieces follow what they made.
Yeah, let the pieces follow.
And I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's.
But I agree with you, if there are doubts, the vote will be no.
Right, and then that, those, those articles can be reshaped into something perhaps that somebody would agree with in the spring.
They can, but I don't know, I, I think all of us have probably sat through at least one of the planning board discussions. I sat through one about a week or two ago. It was like three and a half hours, ten thirty, alright, I'm done. They were still going. They have spent years, not months, but years on these issues and it's, 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 all of these issues are very complex and you can come up with what ifs.
Yeah, right.
Forever.
Yeah.
At some point, you draw a line and say, alright, let's see where we are.
Alright, then.
Yeah.
And this is the time.
And it's.
And I could see from the discussion, I'm seeing, oh, they discussed that two months ago or four months ago. Sometimes it circles around and it comes back again. And there are so many little angles and, and considerations whenever they decide to change one little thing. They can, you can always come up with a, for instance, where, oh, it's going to hurt this person, it's going to hurt that.
Very true.
You, you just, you just have to do it, and they have been doing this for so long, they've really got to. Put it out there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, a, a lot of it is going to be trust. The voters are going to look at it and they'll go through this and say, well, what if this, what if this? The fact is, is the planning board have looked at all of these what ifs.
Yeah.
And have decided on something. And the voters, depending upon how involved they want to get from a mental perspective, can go through all of that. They're going to have to trust that. All the pluses and minuses were looked at by these folks and they felt this is what was in the best interest for our town. And we'll see, I, I tend to think. They're not going to, it's, it's these last three items that Greg, that you, that you mentioned there, the, it's the accessory dwelling, senior housing and the conservation plus. Those are the three, everything else.
Right.
Is going to go. I don't think all three of those are going to go, I'm betting guy. One, one.
Right.
One of them's.
Alright, well.
Let's do all the pain numbers.
I'll take that here now.
Um. So we will have somebody from planning board come on the seventeenth so that we can bring our, so come with questions for that. Um, special town meeting discussions, this is the um, tax incentive, the track road ambulance and forty B expenses. We do have the chief on, um. Greg, what, how do you want to take this? Or taxing, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, you can take them out of order, that's certainly.
Let's take up the ambulance so the chief can.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, so, um, just, just to tee it up, um. So we have the one ambulance, frontline ambulance that, you know, is a few years old now, we, we had a backup ambulance. And that is not functional. It's not worth the cost of repairs at this point. Chief can elaborate on that. Um, so if, if you want two ambulances, which is what we have had. Uh, in recent years, um, so that we can provide a second ambulance service. There's a simultaneous call, we're able to do that, or a lot of times. By the time they get back from the, from the hospital, et cetera, it's quite a bit of time, so. Um, certainly, uh, in the last dozen or so years, we've had that second ambulance. Put to good use. It's a little earlier to, to purchase it, but the problem is the longer the time.
So we, we will be without a second ambulance for two years, even if we decide to buy it right now?
Right, we're currently without a second ambulance.
And chief is nodding, yeah.
Chief can, chief can try, try me here.
So the longer we delay, the longer we're going to have one ambulance.
Correct.
How much do we have to pay now to order an ambulance?
So the, the cost estimate is about four hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay.
Uh. So that's, the, the chief can elaborate on that.
And that's already in the fire um, engine fund, is that correct?
We have those dollars in the fund, yes, that obviously takes a big chunk of that fund away.
Uh, how much is it?
Four hundred and thirty thousand.
One hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
That's what I said.
And we have to, we have to buy it. We have to buy the whole thing now, okay?
But I hope that kind of money, yeah.
Wow, um, that's all.
Do we have to, so town have to vote to move the money out of the fund and into the?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's going to be on the one.
But. Chief?
Yes, uh, good evening, folks, thanks for having me. Um, just a little background. The ambulance replacement plan that I've had for the past couple of years was to replace ambulance one. Our current ambulance in twenty twenty-five, so I would be ordering it normally in twenty twenty-four. Um, since I got here, we've tried to add an extra fifty thousand dollars into the apparatus replacement fund because that fund was originally a ladder truck replacement fund. And there wasn't a funding mechanism that was designated specifically for the ambulance replacement. Ambulance two, which is the ambulance that's been out of service for the past year, and we recently put out to bid. Uh, ran for ten years as a frontline ambulance. And then moved to a spare. And then it didn't get run a lot, and then it ran into problems, that type of motor is very difficult to work on. Very difficult to find people to work on it and very expensive. Uh, I spent somewhere in the neighborhood of. Eight thousand dollars last year trying to get it up to snuff. eight thousand dollars last year trying to get it up to snuff, and it would not become reliable. So we haven't run it in about a year. When we purchased the new ambulance, our current ambulance would go into reserve, but would be rotated into frontline service over the course of the following two years. That would help it from getting too many miles, but would also keep it viable mechanically in the mix. Then two years, after two years of being in reserve, it would still have significant value for either trade in or sale. Where our current ambulance two, with the number of years and the number of miles, is only worth about thirty five hundred dollars.
Thirty five hundred, though.
With respect to having to order, the order to delivery now for new ambulances is somewhere two years plus. Just because of supply chain, because of backups due to COVID, equipment that's needed, and other orders that are already pending. And, and like Greg said, the purchase price would be about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There's a chance there'd be a ten thousand dollar rebate on the chassis. However, the pricing just went up twenty percent as of October first. So where we had been able to order this prior, it would be twenty percent cheaper, but that's how things are going now. Currently, with only one ambulance, if something were to happen to our ambulance, we would have none and wouldn't be able to get one. Wilmington, not too long ago, three or four months ago, had their ambulance, I believe, totaled by being hit by a car while it was working a car accident on Route ninety three. If that were to happen to us, we would have no ambulance. Therefore, we would lose out on our ambulance billing revenue, which currently is in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. Times two years, that's five hundred thousand dollars of income we wouldn't get, because there aren't other ambulances out there. So the second ambulance provides several different backups to us. One, we would have an ambulance to use when ambulance one went out for maintenance. Or if it needed major repairs, or just the standard preventative maintenance we do. Anytime we do that, the ambulance is unavailable to respond to calls and transport patients, so it would be a backup. If we continue to increase our staffing, and say we had four on duty, if two people were out in the ambulance transporting to Beverly Hospital, and there was a second ambulance call, we would be able to handle it. Currently, any subsequent or second ambulance calls has to be handled by a mutual aid ambulance, either one of the local fire departments, or one of the private ambulance services that back us up. At that point, they're the ones that do the billing for the transport, so we lose out on that funding as well. If we were to get second due and simultaneous ambulance calls, because we had a second ambulance, we could potentially increase the income we get from transport billing between twenty and fifty thousand dollars, based on the number of second due ambulance calls that occur during the course of a year. And, and that's why we need to be on top of getting this ambulance and getting it into production, so that we have it as soon as possible.
Chief, can you ever get used secondhand?
They've been scooped up. There aren't many out there, and when you get a second hand, you're getting somebody else's throwaway. You don't know how much miles has been on it, you don't know how, you know, what's broken, the repair history. And, and that's kind of what happened with our ambulance two, is that it just got old and it's tired. And you can't do much to fix that. And the cost of remounting the box part of the ambulance onto a new chassis, if you can find the chassis, only gains you a little bit of time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? John Round?
I'm just trying to handle the four hundred and thirty K right now. Oh, it's four thirty K, is that the new number, or is that the old number?
No, that's what it would cost to buy the ambulance currently.
Okay, so that's the new number?
Yeah.
It did cost.
Was four ten, now we're four thirty. Okay, did you have any questions, John?
No, not right now.
Brian, Kathy, Anne.
I think it's fairly clear that we need two ambulances. We're not gonna have two ambulances for two years if we buy it now.
Right.
And it's just gonna get worse, so, yeah, no questions.
Okay.
Do we pay for this in advance?
Oh, okay.
Maybe something in advance.
If they're appropriate, or put the money aside, or.
Right, we have to have the money available before we can sign the contract.
We don't spend it, but.
We don't spend, but we have to have it set aside.
We don't have an actual contract. They, they were willing to take our order, knowing that we were good for the money, because we've dealt with Greenwood, bought all our apparatus from them. So we hadn't talked actual down payment numbers. But they, they were primarily knew that we needed to get in an order, and they were willing to work with us.
Usually we sign the contract, but we can't sign the contract until we have the actual appropriation, we don't actually pay the money until we take delivery.
However, if we have to do a down payment, do we then do another, I mean, I know we, we say, okay, we appropriate the town vote.
That's all we need, and then we do the paper, we can pay partial.
They can pay part, okay, excellent.
I move that we put transfer of money from the fire apparatus account reserve fund on the, on the warrant.
To the tune of four hundred and thirty thousand.
To the tune of four hundred and thirty thousand. Maybe four hundred and fifty, just to be, so, because if we don't use it, it can go back.
Second. Okay. Roll call, but motion made by Anne Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Ryan Solis says, Kathy Bellotta, Anne Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jake says, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support, folks. Have a good evening.
The tip. All right, so.
I have a question on the tip.
Okay, tax increment financing. Yeah, I had, this, this is a little interesting to get through and chew on.
One question, Greg, is that, yeah, of course, there's no on the last page. Which is concentrate development and mixed uses in area adjacent to existing downtowns. The area that we're thinking about is as far from adjacent to downtown as you can get in town.
Adjacent one year, but.
Right, so a lot of, a lot of the tips are focused on mixed uses.
Yes.
Ours is more the commercial development focus. So there's an ability to get permission for that as well. So there, there's this flexibility in what D H C D will approve, this, Department of Housing and Community Affairs. So there, there's some flexibility.
In spite of what it says. And, and the other is, how would we set up a tip zone?
Well, so, so you could use, for example, the LCD to the east of school street. You could define that as your zone.
Okay.
As an example.
And there, there, there are still several property owners there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we would, they would all be included in?
They would all have the eligible, but then it's, it's a case by case negotiation that, that has to be approved by the voters as well. So the voters approve the general concept, and then if you have a specific negotiated proposal, the voters approve that as well. So it is a, it's a two-step process for voter approval.
I have a question, just in general, how this is gonna, how this would work. Now, if I understand that you have tax abatements, for example, you're gonna abate a hundred thousand dollars in taxes over, I don't know, five or six years, or something like that, in exchange for the property owner paying that hundred thousand dollars now to put in a new sewer line. Is that kinda how it works? So in other words, you're gonna pay me now, and you will get the money back through tax abatements over a period of time. In theory, it's kind of a wash.
But you don't, there's not a requirement to have it be a wash, but.
That's, that's how it's supposed to work.
A lot of times, that is what communities do.
Okay, all right.
But sometimes they will give the taxpayer, but just because they want the new growth, the new jobs. Take a haircut of the taxes, because they, they're getting more taxes in general anyways.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I mean, if it's a wash, the community says, well, why don't we just pay for it now? And pay for the hundred that made, does a community not have a hundred thousand dollars, or is that, what's the motivation? That's generally, we don't have a hundred thousand, but you do.
And, and often, you know, the private sector can do a project less expensive than.
Okay, okay, understood. So I understand in general how it, how, how it works. It's just, it's really a time when certain things are done, and it's more efficient this way. Well, I mean, I mean, it's like a sewer line, you gotta have it now.
Gives flexibility in the finance, so the financing doesn't get in the way of stuff getting done when it needs to get done, right?
Yeah.
Gives the town the negotiating capability to make sure that things can get done.
I'm all for it.
I would rather see us put it off to the annual.
I, I tend to agree. So a lot of times, you have a choice. You can first get approval for the concept, you get the authorization, and then come back for a specific case. Sometimes we'll do that in one bundle. Here's, you know, grant the authorization and grant the first.
We're not prepared to draft the first agreement.
We're not, no.
So we don't need, yeah, so.
We don't need to confuse people further in the November town meeting.
I think this is probably best put off.
Right, so we don't need a motion for that, we just don't.
Passing it over for now, but we'll continue to continue to give the information.
Okay.
Perhaps tee it up for the annual town meeting.
Next, we have tobacco.
Right, so tobacco road, as I briefly mentioned last time, Hamilton has has indicated that they would be receptive to us trying again, to see if voters would approve a new layout.
Before we go ahead, I had noticed that there was a comment that I saw, I'm sorry, just before we go off this, I didn't know if that pertained to the.
Yeah, Seaport Economic, he's just commenting that sometimes the Seaport Economic Council will provide funding.
Yeah, that was in the.
For, for Harbor.
Right, I saw that, he did make that comment, okay, thank you, sorry about that, back to tobacco.
So, yeah, so, so Hamilton has said if, if we wanted to try again, they would be, they'd be willing to to wait and see what the results of that are. They don't wanna wait very long. But they would be willing for us to try again at this upcoming town meeting. They are looking for a financial contribution towards the cost. I don't have a number on that yet. Probably the two to three hundred thousand dollar range is what I'm thinking. I need to get confirmation from them. So we did, it's, it's a judgment call on your part. Wanna pursue it, I know that the water task force had discussions.
I think the task force has to chat about it on Thursday.
I'm gonna chat about it some more. And I know that the Conservation Commission as part of their comments to the Hamilton Conservation Commission, where they were reviewing the repave, not repave, but paving the current road. They had a number of concerns about additional traffic coming off of paved road versus gravel road. I think from the Conservation Commission's perspective, I think they would favor taking another bite at this one. And see if it could be proved, they prefer to see the road relocated rather than paved in its current location.
But you gotta attach money to that.
Yes.
I, I have a hard time saying, without knowing what the amount is. So, but I, I John, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I, I saw the comments that Greg put in here, and I, I tend to agree with that. If they're looking for half a million dollars, no.
Half or half a million dollars.
That's the, that's the half of a half of it. In other words, if it's in the two hundred area, yeah, I think that, that makes sense. I don't know what this total project, you don't even know how much they want, much less what the total project.
I think the total project is probably in the one point five, this range. It was around one point two a year and a half ago, so it's probably, maybe it's one point three and five, I, I don't.
The Water Task Force has concerns about the road being closed to gravelly pond. The ConCon has concerns about that. Is that two hundred thousand
Right.
Concerns? I think so.
That's exactly. Two to three hundred, are we? So, Brian, thoughts?
No, I think that John summarized it pretty well.
Kathy?
I wanna hear from the Water Task Force.
Anne?
I think I would be surprised if the Water Task Force wasn't in favor.
No, they, they, they would be.
And, and we could certainly wait to hear from them, cuz we don't have an absolute decision, but I, I, I think the rerouting the road, the tobacco road is, would be better for both towns.
Yeah, what's going through my mind is that this had vote had gone through last November. Would Hamilton have come back to us in six months and said, we've seen how much this costs, you guys wanna kick in a little money here? Or otherwise, they, because they could always pay, they'd still have the right to pay the other road, the existing road that exists.
Well, they would have been able to do it for a different amount of money. They would have been. So that's exactly it. The number has, we're, we're sort of, I think, given another opportunity to come up with a better solution.
Do we have time to explain this to the town?
Well, as much as the ambulance, I mean, I think that this is the kind of.
The, the ambulance is, is a little different in that it's coming out of an existing fund.
Correct. I, I think, I think we do.
Okay.
I think we do, and I think, but before we bring it forward, I would like to know what that number is, before I actually say yes or no. Can we?
Right, no, we, we have, I'll just tell, we need, we have to have that number by the seventeenth.
Right, and I would. I, I would like to have, it doesn't have to be the Water Resource Protection Task Force, but I'd love to have a ConCon, ConCom commentary.
So just to, refreshing my memory, is the reason it was voted down, because the town thought by voting it down, it would, there wouldn't be nothing paved there?
Well.
What I'm looking at is, have we addressed the root cause concern?
So, yeah, speculation on my part, but I think there were enough questions raised about the permitting of the alternative road that enough people said no, that it didn't get the two thirds necessary. So not all those questions have been answered. Hamilton is not gonna spend money answering those questions until they know it's a, it's a yes vote. So we're not gonna.
The narrative that we tell has to, I think, refer back to last year, just to make sure we answer as many questions as we can, right?
There was also some confusion.
There was, and then the key thing. That I don't think voters understood the last time is that Hamilton had. The perfect right to pave the road as it was.
I think.
People thought we can vote this down and vote on it later on.
Right.
And Hamilton said, forget, we gotta, we gotta move ahead here. And I think if people understand that, it's not like, we're still not in the driver's seat a hundred percent. I mean, if we say, no, we're not gonna give you two hundred thousand, but if that gets voted down. Then they just turn around and pave the road as it stands now.
That's the point, John. You're right. The people need to understand, so.
Okay, Hamilton has choices.
I agree with that. I think, um, that's kind of my concern. We're gonna bring something forward. And if we don't address the root cause of why it failed last year, we're going to have it fail again. That's.
It was also a complicated meeting with, with different people in different rooms.
That didn't help.
Yes. Okay, yes, well, they, they, and, and it, you know.
Either get the road, okay, or they can pave it and they can say, hey, we tried.
Absolutely, well, they will.
Yeah.
It's going, they're going to be paving something, so, um, can we have? On the seventeenth. Have some specific numbers for this.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can decide at that time? Then everybody, okay, uh, next up, we have forty B expenses. Which, you know, we're going to be. Coming.
So, obviously, like everyone knows, we are, um. Beginning the appeal process to the Housing Appeals Committee at the state level. Um, so the applicant is appealing the Z D A denial in order to defend. Um, that denial that we will be to expend dollars, both on legal fees and hiring. Expert consultants on various topics, primarily environmental topics, public safety. Which is the primary areas of concern that the Z D A focused on, denying the project. That'll be the focus of, of the defense of that decision. Um, so a bit of a guessing game in terms of total dollars. But I think if voters were to approve one hundred, hundred plus, hundred thirty thousand. Um, that would be, that should be sufficient to, uh, to defend the decision to. Have a very vigorous, uh, defense before the Housing Appeals Committee.
Where would this come from, the money this?
So two choices, what is from fund balance or, or it could be additional taxation.
Has the Finance Committee considered this?
Not yet, they're, they're meeting next week.
Um, well, I think no matter what, it needs to go on the warrant. Does anybody? Think otherwise?
No.
I would like to hear from, from, um, FinCom, how they would recommend that be. Um, so we can find out. Um, should we go ahead? And vote it onto the warrant, but finalize. The wording of the amount.
That can even happen at town meeting.
Okay.
So, yes, I move that we put. Monies for, um, the defense of the zoning Board of Appeals decision, warrant.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solis, you roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solis.
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jake says, yes, it's unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to county administrators report.
Okay, a few items here, um. One is to, just to go over the, uh, the way that election ballots are handled. There's some, there were some, some concerns about that over the primary and, um. Indeed, some of the protocols weren't followed, the routine, um, which they need to be. Going, um, and we reviewed that process and have ensured, um, some better safeguards. So that they are absolutely handled appropriately and, um. So in your packet, provided a summary of how the ballots are handled, um, the. Jump to the chase in terms of after, and then after the election is over, the ballots are counted, they're tallied. Um, at the, at the polling location, they are sealed, um, as required by law in boxes right then and there. Um, as well as all the unvoted ballots. Those are also counted and sealed. Um, so then those sealed boxes, uh, need to be transported back to Town Hall. So they will be transported by a police officer, um, who will create a police log. Um, stating that they have taken the boxes, um, transported them to Town Hall, um, and brought them into, um. One of the holding cells in Town Hall, uh, which is under twenty-four hour surveillance, camera surveillance. And so that's where they remain, um, until the, uh, the town clerk typically the next day comes in and. Uh, moves them up to, um, the storage, the archive room, the storage, which is also a locked facility. So the, um, the extra insurance here is making sure that the police log it in as an activity. So that we have that, um, that record, um, of being transported. Um, in that manner and being brought straight to the, to the cell, the, the lock and key and under surveillance. So, uh, that's a shortened version of that process, but that's, that was the point that I wanted to highlight, I think, the most. To, to give people that assurance.
And we have, so we have a policy in place.
Right, so been reviewed by, uh, both Town Clerk and the Police Department, a police chief. Um, everyone is on board and it's understood and, yeah, it's, it's, it's in writing, it is to be followed.
Does Town Council need to review that?
They, they were, uh, they've been involved. We, we talked to them, we also were involved. We also talked to the Secretary of State's office. Uh, they were pleased with this, uh, this protocol.
Stupid question, why don't the police take it directly to the act back?
Well, just because that's not their jurisdiction. So their jurisdiction is, is, uh, the, the police station.
Good question, huh?
And, uh. That way.
We get one more transfer.
You do get one more transfer.
Any questions from the board?
Sound, makes sense.
Yeah.
It's simple.
Alright, thank you, Greg.
So that's that, and like I said, uh, there's always that, that log entry and paper trail, so we can always verify. The event has happened. So I think that's, that's all well good.
Then.
So moving on, uh, Board of Health, we are, uh, hoping to finalize a recommendation for new health agent. Uh, we're doing another round of interviews tomorrow. Um, and hope to have a final recommendation with your ratification, uh, as a department leader. Uh, round all of those appointments, and so we're looking to do that on the seventeenth at your next meeting. So we're pleased with, uh, uh, the candidates and optimistic that we will. Be able to recommend a very competent person. That's, that's encouraging, uh, and then I just, I'll be out of the office a little bit this week, coming up.
Alright, so now we go into executive session, so, um. Would like to have a motion to. Leave public meeting to enter into executive session per mass general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight. Conduct strategy with respect to contract negotiations with terrible union. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating positions of the public body and the chairs that declares. And not return to open meeting. The vote. Second. Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta, roll call vote, Ann Harrison. Kathy Bellotta, yes, Brian Solis. John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes, as well. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening's meeting. Good night. Thank you, Debbie, very much. Uh, so today we need to say good night to you, Daisy D'Antio. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Good night, Debbie, thank you. Alright, and would we like to take a short bio break? Okay, uh, sign and.
Stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, it's a stretchy break.
Oh, good golly. This is a very dangerous.
No, it's not that, it's the standing up part after however many hours.
Three.